Good evening, I'd like to call this special meeting the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a budget workshop for the 2018-2019 city budget, and so we're going to kick this off. There's going to be two budget hearings, and then the budget adoption at the first council meeting in May. So to get us started, I will hand it over to our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very pleased, on behalf of administration, to present the fiscal year 2018-2019 proposed budget, beginning this evening, which as you indicated is the first of three budget hearings. As we've done in the past, we'll start with a number of presentations, and then we'll have plenty of time to address any questions from the audience and council members. And we would respectfully request that questions be held until we complete all the presentations. At the conclusion of the presentations, the appropriation ordinance needs to be introduced, and this will then enable City Council to make amendments to the budget throughout the hearings. I'd like to add, for anyone watching who's interested in looking at the budget in more depth, it's on our website, so you can look at the complete budget package and see all the information that City Council's looking at. And Mayor, we'd like to begin with the following video.
The city adopts a budget each year that reflects the City Council's goals and the ongoing commitment to provide efficient and essential services to our residents and businesses. By continuing to invest in the community while at the same time practicing good financial stewardship, the city will continue to provide an exceptional quality of life, outstanding services, and will remain a destination for both residents and businesses. The budget totals $231.3 million, an increase of $24.8 million, or 12%. The total budget incorporates not only the cost to operate city services (police, fire, and public works, for example), but also includes investments in roads and facilities. The total budget increase is a result of significant investments in road repairs, recreating recreation improvements, and facility and technology upgrades across all city buildings. The general fund budget totals $105.1 million, an increase of 11.8%. Additional funds are budgeted for major road improvements, debt service on facility improvements, an increase in the funding for long-term retirement liabilities, and contractual wage adjustments for city employees. Over 60% of the general fund budget is dependent upon property taxes. Of the total, businesses pay approximately 30% of the tax bill, while city residents pay the remaining 70%. The city's diversified tax base and economic development efforts also help to lower taxes for residential property owners. Residential properties in this city experienced a 3.4% increase in market value this past year, but only a 2.1% increase in taxable value. A family living in a typical home will pay $96 per month in city property tax. This includes a $6 per month increase for a one-time adjustment to the city operating millage to fund $4.2 million in additional road repairs. Remember that although the city issues and collects the tax bill, nearly 60% of the amount collected goes towards funding schools and county-wide government operations. Because of the efficient delivery of services, the city's tax rate remains one of the lowest of any city in Macomb County. In fact, the city's tax rate is 6.4 mils lower than the average of all Macomb County cities. The largest amount of an average Sterling Heights homeowner's monthly city tax bill is for police protection and the operation of the court, which totals $32. $17 of the monthly tax bill goes to support the fire department, while $10 goes towards funding public works, snow plowing, and refuse collection services. In other words, nearly 60% of a homeowner's city tax bill funds public safety and public works. Residents pay less than $8 a month for the public library, parks and recreation, and senior citizen services. As a result, Sterling Heights homeowners continue to receive an excellent value for their tax dollar. The budget includes funding for 477 full-time positions, a net increase of six positions, including a teen librarian, a planning coordinator, and two laborers in the sewer department. The city's staffing levels continue to be the lowest of our comparable communities in the state, and lower than most cities across the country, a main factor in the city's ability to maintain a very low tax rate. The city will also continue to offer low residential water and sewer rates. This year's water and sewer rate increase will be the lowest increase in 10 years. The average household will pay only $77 per month for all water and sewer services. A significant focus of the proposed budget is investment in our roads. The budget funds a total of over $20 million in road improvements. Improvements will be seen on Dodge Park, Mound, North Van Dyke, Merrill Road, and Stadler Drive, as well as $4.2 million of investment in neighborhood roads. The proposed one-year-only millage increase will fund additional road improvements, including Phase II of Shainer Road, Utica Road, 15 Mile, 17 Mile, and 19 Mile Roads, and Metro Other significant projects funded in the proposed budget include: the continuation of parks and recreation improvements funded through the Recreating Recreation Millage, including the completion of the Dodge Park renovations, and the community center groundbreaking; the first phase of upgrades to infrastructure and technology throughout all four buildings on the city center main campus; and the replacement of over 380 radios for the police and fire department; the final six emergency warning sirens; and the citywide phone system; 14 police vehicles, a fire engine, a DPW dump truck, and a sanitary sewer camera truck; and the use of federal funds to expand the senior center parking lot. In conclusion, the budget demonstrates that the city continues to provide efficient city services at a low cost. This year's budget significantly increases investment in road repair and facility infrastructure, and continues to reflect the city's longstanding tradition of excellence by investing in neighborhoods and public safety, effective property maintenance initiatives, diversified economic development efforts, and a variety of community-oriented services. The budget reflects what this community strives to be: a safe, vibrant, and welcoming place to live and work.
And Mayor, continuing on, I would like to introduce our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney, who will provide an overview of the budgets being considered this evening.
Mrs. Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Koszyupski, and members of Council. I am very happy to be here tonight to present an overview of the proposed 2018-19 budget. As mentioned in the video, the total city budget is $231.3 million, which can be broken down into the five major fund types which are depicted here. In total, the budget increased 12%, or $24.8 million. I know that seems like a lot, but as you can see from the major components which are listed here, the majority of the increase is due to infrastructure investments, and consists of the following: a $6.5 million increase in major road improvements; the second year of expenditures for the Recreating Recreation Initiatives increases the budget $7.5 million; the first phase of facilities and information technology improvements across all city buildings totals $7 million; increased debt service for the facilities improvement bond and for road bonds, as well as the transfer from the general fund to cover those payments increases the total fund budget $3.5 million; and total personnel costs increased $2.6 million, and that's due to about $1.1 million increase in required funding for pension and retirement liabilities and contractual wage adjustments. Now we'll look at the city's largest fund, the general fund, in closer detail. General fund totals $105 million and makes up about 45% of the total city budget. The general fund can be further divided into the city's eight departmental budgets as depicted here, and as you can see, over 62% of the general fund budget funds police, fire, and public works, which are represented here by the red, blue, and purple sections of the graph. The remaining departments total just under 23%, and transfers to other funds make up the remaining 15%, and each of these departments will be reviewed in further detail. The general fund budget increased 11.8%, or $11.1 million, and this slide details the major increases to the general fund budget. So if we start with the 2018 budget, it was $94 million, and then we show the increases. Again, the biggest increase is a $6.5 million transfer to major roads. And then we have increased wages and pension contributions that total about $2.4 million, and debt service on the facilities improvement bond of $1.4. And the remainder is made up of overall increases in contracted services, irrigation costs, and training for all city employees. And this brings us to the bottom-line general fund budget this year of $105.1 million. As always, we are continuing to make progress on funding our post-retirement liabilities, and will once again fully fund our required contribution to all three plans at a $1.1 million increase over last year. Now this year, we reduced the assumed rates of returns on all three plans, and that resulted in a temporary decrease in funding level, down to 79.1% for general employees' plan and 66.7% for police and fire. However, these assumptions will ensure that the plans are properly funded and ensure the long-term viability of the plans. Next, we'll look at general fund revenues. Budgeted general fund revenues totaled just over $106 million, and most of the general fund revenue is from property taxes, a total of 61.5%. And the second-largest component is state soruses, which includes revenue sharing and personal property tax reimbursements at 16.3%. Followed by charges for services, which includes the new EMS transport revenue, and cross-charges from other funds, engineering revenues, and court and building revenues. Total general fund revenues increased 10.2%, or $9.8 million, over last year's budget. And the majority of the increase, 6.7% of the 9.8%, is in property taxes. Now this increase is made up of two components. The first is that taxable values increased 4% this year due to a 2.1% inflationary adjustment, and also additional increases due to new development, and this increased total property tax revenue by about $2.5 million. And the remaining increase in property taxes is due to the proposed one-time, one-mil property tax increase, and that will raise $4.2 million, and will be dedicated to additional major road improvements. Again, this increase will be for this year only, and will be rolled back next year. Now this 4.2, along with an additional 2.3 million in general fund transfers, makes up the increase of $6.5 million to major road improvements that was mentioned earlier. Other increases in revenue include an increase in state revenue sharing of about $900,000 over last year's budget. EMS transport revenue, now that we have a full year, will have more revenue than last year. We also have revenue from the SAFER grant, which is a grant that the fire department received, and it will offset the cost of the 15 new firefighters we hired last year for about two and a half years. And then also, we saw an increase in investment income this year due to the rising interest As explained in the video, the city's tax rate continues to be one of the lowest in Macomb County, and is 6.4 mils below the average of all Macomb County cities. Here is the average tax revenue per resident. We are still the lowest of our comparable communities. For the fifth year in a row, the proposed budget increases general fund balance. General fund revenues total $106.3 million, while general fund expenditures total $105.1 million, resulting in revenues greater than expenditures of $1.2 million, which we will add to general fund balance. This graph shows how we're doing on our goal to reach 25% fund balance of general fund expenditures. For 2018, you can see up here, we are estimated to be at 23.5% at the end of this fiscal year. Now next year, we're going to add to general fund balance $1.2 million, so we will increase the dollar amount of general fund balance, but we will see a one-year temporary decrease in the percentage, and that's because it's a percent of general fund expenditures, and because we're spending an additional $6.5 million of roads, on roads, as a percentage of expenditures, our general fund balance will go down, but it's still increasing in dollar amount next year. And as the updated five-year plan shows, we are still on track to reach our 25% goal in 2020, and then on to 2021 through 2023, maintain that 26%, 27% level into the future, which is our long-term goal. Next, we're going to look at special revenue funds. There are six funds that total $51.7 million. The largest special revenue fund is Parks and Recreation, and this was a new fund last year that we created because of the Recreating Recreation Millage. And this fund totals $26.9 million, and that's a $7.6 million increase over last year. Now this increase is just due to the second year of expected capital expenditures of the park improvements, and again, all funded through the Recreating Recreation Millage. And this year, we're expected to see the completion of Dodge Park renovations and the groundbreaking on the community center. Now 42%, or $21.7 million of special revenue funds are for the maintenance and repairs to the city's major roads and local neighborhood streets. Now through the use of the proposed one-year, one-mil increase, and additional dedicated funding from the general fund, we've been able to increase major road funding in both the current budget year. As you can see, we had originally budgeted $6 million in major road, and then we received some additional monies from the state this year that you may have heard of, and we're able to move some money from the general fund. So for the current budget year, we've increased from $6 million to $7.7. And then next year, with the use of the one-time millage, we're able to increase just the major road funding to $12.6 million. And thanks to the Safe Streets Millage, we continue to see significant investment in neighborhood roads, and the proposed budget continues to make investments well above the $3.4 million generated from Safe Streets. And again, Safe Streets is only for use on local neighborhood roads. Now when you look at all funds, where you, if you add up local road funding, major road funding, road bond construction, which is road funding that we borrow money to fund, and there's also some road expenditures in the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and the Local Development Finance Authority. And if you look at the city budget for all of these sources, our total road funding is $20 million for next year, and that's the city portion. Now the remaining special revenue funds make up 6.1%, and they include the Community Development Block Grant, and again, that's funded with federal dollars, and this year, the CDBG is able to fund the expansion of a senior center parking lot and one neighborhood road. And we also have public safety forfeitures, which fund equipment and supplies for the police department, and that's through the use of proceeds from seized property. And the Local Development Finance Authority uses tax capture revenue to fund the Velocity Business Incubator and other Smart Zone activities. This year, concrete replacement on Sterling Drive is funded through the Local Development Finance Authority. Next up is the Capital Projects Fund, which totals $16.2 million. There's three funds here that include the Road Bond Construction Fund, as well as the repair of city facilities, and for replacing equipment and vehicles, and many of these were mentioned in the video, and will be further detailed throughout the departmental The Facilities Improvement Fund is new this year, and this was set up to account for the facilities improvement that will be funded through a bond issuance, and these will be a variety of improvements across the four major city buildings: City Hall, the Police Department, the Public Library, and the 41A District Court, and there will also be information technology upgrades across all city buildings. Next is the Debt Service Funds, which make up 2.3% of the total city budget. There are three funds that total $5.4 million, and that's a $2.2 million increase over last year. As mentioned earlier, this increase is due to new debt payment on the facilities improvement bond, and increased debt payments on roads' bonds. We also pay debt on the fire station improvements, and those will be paid off in 2023, and for the City Hall improvements from 2000, and these bonds are almost paid off and will be paid off in 2020. And although our debt levels have increased the past few years, you can see from the following slides that we are well below our legal limits. So this slide shows our legal debt limit, and that is 10% of state equalized value is our legal limit. And our state equalized value for 2018 was about $5.3 billion, and state equalized value represents 50% of the true cash value of residential and commercial properties. Now our legal limit is 10%, and that equates to about $526 million. And our total debt outstanding that's applicable to this limit, and this includes the new facilities improvement bond, is $131 million. Now this limit does not include road bond or special assessment debt. And so based on this, we are at 25% of our legal limit. Now there's a second limit we have when it comes to road bond debt. That limit is 50% of our annual revenue received from the state or Act 51 money. So in 2018, we're going to receive about $11.5 million, so 50% of that would be about $5.75 million. Now this limit applies to our debt service, which is the total of our principal plus our interest payments. So for 2018-19, the budget has $3.2 million of our debt payments on roads, so that equates to about 56% of our limit. So as you can see, we are well within our legal limits. And also, this is another slide I like to show. It's important to note that only a small portion of our debt is actually funded with the general fund. Most of our city debt has a dedicated funding source. Recreating Recreation, we have a dedicated millage that funds our debt payment. Act 51 debt, we have state Act 51 money that funds the debt. And the fire station bond, again, a dedicated millage. So only 23% of our debt, which this year equates to $1.7 million in payments annually, is from the general fund. Now the final of the five major fund types, which is the Water and Sewer Fund, that totals $52.9 million, and this will be discussed at the next budget hearing in detail on April 24th. Now we have three department budgets we're going to go over tonight, and you'll see presentations from the departments. First, the City Administration Department, and that's made up of two divisions with 47 full-time and eight part-time staff. This includes city management, the city clerk's office, and information technology, and also the finance and budget offices, which include assessing, financial services, purchasing, treasury, and new this year, facilities maintenance has been moved to the finance and budget office, reporting to the purchasing manager. Now this table shows the department's current budget and next year's budget, and how much it's changed. The top section shows the budget by office, and the bottom adds all the offices together for the department, and shows it by type of expense. Now city administration increased by 25.8%, but 21% of that is merely due to facilities maintenance moving to city management from city development. Personnel costs increased due to the hiring of an additional full-time facility maintenance mechanic, and this will be funded through the Recreating Recreation funding. There were also contractual wage increases for all city employees, and funding for retirement liabilities increased. Now these increases were offset by savings due to two upcoming retirements in which we had overlap hires. The city assessor and purchasing manager will be retiring by the end of this year. Supplies increased due to the purchases of materials for the new hire orientation program, and a camera and photo printer required for the city clerk to begin processing passports. And additional increases to other charges include contracted services to outsource recruitment, background testing, and CROBRA Health Insurance Administration, and higher maintenance and licensing fees for the storage area network system and financial software. And the capital budget funds the replacement of 135 voting booths, and that's part of a three-year plan to replace all of the voting booths. And as mentioned in the video, a citywide phone system, and this is going to replace a nearly 20-year-old obsolete phone system. And we're also investing in a new payroll and timekeeping software system that will particularly streamline timekeeping for the police and fire department. And we're also installing an irrigation system for the islands in the back of City Hall. Next up is the Fire Department, and this budget includes $100,000 Next up is the Fire Department, and this budget includes 103 full-time and one part-time staff and three divisions. No additions in personnel to this department this year, and this is our second-largest cost center. Now, the total budget for the Fire Department increased by 2.1%, and that was primarily due to personnel, and that's primarily just due to contractual wage adjustments and increases in the retirement liabilities. And these increases were offset by savings and overtime and lower insurance costs, and that was due to a higher-than-expected amount of single-person contracts in the Fire Department. Supplies decreased 13.6%, and that was due to the prior-year funding of air packs and the EMS transports costs, which were in the prior year. And other charges increased 7.1%, and that's because we expect medical billing volume to go up this year, and there's a cost associated with billing that extra volume. Now, the Fire Chief will be providing an update on the status of EMS transport services, and that will include a financial update. The capital budget funds the replacement of a 20-year-old fire engine, emergency vehicle traffic preemption devices, and the replacement of 116 portable and mobile radios that are 11 years old and at the end of their useful life, and a backup generator for station number three. The main performance indicators for the Fire Department, you can see EMS runs continue to increase. They're up 2.5% from last year to 11, over 11,000, and in the past 10 years, EMS runs have increased 43%. Now, fire incidents have went down. They're slightly down from last year, down to 239 incidents compared to 255 last year, and it continued to average fewer than one fire incident per station per week. Now, the final department for tonight is City Development, and this department is made up of five divisions and totals 41 employees. City Development's budget actually decreased over 17%. However, this is primarily due to just moving facilities maintenance to city administration. Other than that, the department actually increased about 6.6%. Personnel costs, again, due to contractual wage adjustments and increase in long-term liability funding, and we also added a part-time code enforcement officer to oversee the noxious weed program. A full-time planning coordinator position was added. However, this was offset by the elimination of the city development manager position, which was combined with the city planner position. And again, other charges increased due to the transfer of the noxious weed cutting program to Neighborhood Services from Public Works, and also for the training and implementation of a planning, zoning, and engineering module for the BSNA software. The capital budget funds a robotic survey instrument for engineering and the replacement of four personal computers and 15 iPads. The number of properties cleaned up due to enforcement efforts remains high and is very similar to last year's levels. Continued emphasis on code enforcement, as well as the addition of a part-time code enforcement officer, will ensure that this remains a priority. And residential and commercial building permits also continue to increase. An update on building permit activity, as well as code enforcement, will be provided later this evening. And that concludes my overview, Mr. Mayor, and now I turn it back over to Mr. Vanderpool.
And Mayor, what we'd like to do now is highlight a number of initiatives and some of the offices and departments considered this evening, and we'll start with the city clerk. One way the city is able to fill the void of 175, 100 fewer full-time employees is through better technology, which results in more efficiencies and increased productivity. So our city clerk, Melanie Ryska, will now discuss an initiative improving productivity and also a new value-added service for residents that will start this year.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Kachubski, and members of the audience. Tonight, I want to share with you our progress on Phase 1 of our records retention management project, touch base on the 2018 elections, and introduce our new passport acceptance service that will be provided by the clerk's office beginning in August of 2018. In August of 2017, city council approved the purchase of OnBase Enterprise Content Management Software. Phase 1 of our overall records management project is focused on our most vital permanent records: council agendas, packets, and minutes. The goal of this phase is to increase agenda management efficiency. All departments provide easier accessibility to these historical documents. The clerk's office and IT department, in partnership with Highland Software and Applied Imaging, have worked vigorously over the last seven months to customize a solution that will automate and streamline agenda item creation and routing, reducing manual tasks and paper processes. We are currently testing the new agenda management system, and will go live in the next couple months. City council will be provided access to packets on their iPads through the Agenda-to-Go app, where they will be able to easily navigate through the packet and take notes right on the app on specific items. The public will also have easier access to packet information, and will be able to click on specific item to view the backup document rather than have to download the entire packet, which can sometimes be upwards of 500 pages. Future phases of this project will be comprised of document management and retention solutions that will support the city in our efforts to follow state-recommended records retention schedules. Future phases will also include implementation of a central repository of electronic records to reduce duplication and increase searchability and retrieval. A full citywide records management system will take five to seven years to complete. Next, I'll talk about the 2018 elections. The city clerk's office will administer three elections in 2018. The first is a special election for a Macomb Community College Millage to be held on Tuesday, May 8, 2018. We have already mailed out nearly 6,000 absent voter ballots for the May election, and other election preparations are currently underway. The other two elections are on August 7, which is a state primary, and the November 6 state general election. Voters will elect a governor, secretary of state, attorney general, and U.S. representatives, among other races that are listed on the screen. Next, I will touch on new election equipment that we received in 2017 and are planning for FY 1819. As you know, the city implemented new election tabulators at the last local election in November. Voters and election inspectors gave high reviews of the new DS200s and Express Vote machines. The equipment is both voter and inspector-friendly, making election day run smoother than with our old equipment. As a part of the clerk's office FY 1819 budget, we are planning on the purchase of new voting booths as well. A majority of our voting booths are more than 25 years old, already maintained to their potential, many can no longer be repaired. The proposed replacement option is the Ready Vote booth that requires no assembly and minimal maintenance. These steel booths are stable and on wheels, making precincts set up almost effortless. The versatility of the Ready Vote booths will also allow for more efficient use of space in our smaller precincts. We will, we will replace nearly 400 booths over the next three years. I'm excited to announce that the next new service that will be, that will be provided by the city clerk's office by August 2018 is passport acceptance. A passport acceptance facility is a public sector office that is designated to accept and execute passport applications on behalf of the U.S. Department of State. The acceptance facility confirms that the correct application and the required documents are being submitted, as well as verifying the applicant's identity and witnessing them signing the application. The State Department processes the paperwork and issues the passport if the customer is eligible. The clerk's office routinely receives inquiries regarding passport processing. With the exception of post offices, there are only three acceptance facilities within 10 miles of the city of Sterling Heights. The average annual increase in passport applications in Michigan over the last three years is about 15%, with over 450,000 issued in 2017 alone. Sterling Heights residents go to neighboring communities such as Shelby Township or Clinton Township to file. Sterling Heights has a population of over 130,000 residents, many of whom travel abroad for a variety of reasons. Additionally, there are three high schools located in the city, and many, many young adults travel abroad for spring break. This service will provide our residents a convenient, accessible facility to accept their passport applications. This is also an additional revenue stream for the city. The U.S. Department of State imposes a current execution fee of $25 per passport application that is retained by the acceptance facility. Beginning April 2, which has already begun of 2018, the fee was increased to $35. As an added convenience, we will offer passport photos for a fee of $20. Communities that serve as passport acceptance facility reportedly realize a revenue of $60,000 to $70,000 annually. Conservative estimates of accepting 15 applications with photos per week show an annual revenue of over $33,000. Looking at the chart, you can see how quickly the revenue can add up. Increasing to 35 a week shows an annual revenue of over $77,000 per year. Aside from the revenue, however, this is a service that our residents have been requesting for some time now, and we are excited to provide this service in August of 2018. The city clerk's office continues to strive to innovate procedures and introduce new services to benefit the city and residents of Sterling Heights. Thank you for your attention, and I now turn it back over to Mr. Vanderpool.
And continuing on, the mayor, city council, and administration are continuing, continually exploring ways to improve public safety services. Our Fire Chief, Chris Martin, will provide an update on transport services and a new technology that may be deployed throughout the city over the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Kachubski. It's my honor to be here tonight to present to you the proposed 2018-2019 fire budget. Before I get into the proposed budget, I would like to provide some updates about the current budget year, which was exceptionally busy in many ways. Brought onboard 19 new firefighters, 15 of which were part of the ALS Transport Initiative. This meant there were several swearing-in events in front of city council, as well as badge-pinning ceremonies at fire headquarters. Recently presented our 11th Survival Coin and had the pleasure of holding several of these presentations over the past year. This has proven to be a very well-received program that is emotional each time, and each time becomes very memorable. But who can forget that one of the lives we saved was one of a 15-year-old young man? There have also been significant incidents in the past year, including the largest fire in the city's history at Buff Whalen, which caused a need for a substantial amount of mutual aid. The system was certainly tested that day, and it worked out very well. There was also a large fire at AG Simpson Automotive, and as a footnote, our indicators will show a significant increase in fire losses in inspectable properties, which may be looked at as alarming. However, both of these multimillion-dollar fire losses were the fault of human error that could not be prevented by inspections. Sorry about that.
Well, Chief, I noticed there was the picture of the three kids, and you glossed over that.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I would think you'd upon a highlight would...
I don't know how it jumped. Sorry about that. And who forget, who could forget the three young boys whose rescue from a gun safe made national news? We also took delivery of and placed in service a new ladder truck, which is a very versatile piece of equipment that will serve our needs well into the future and is also very sharp-looking. Lastly, it was without a doubt that the biggest undertaking over the past year was the transition to providing ALS transport services as part of the Fire Department. After nearly a year of hard work by many people in the organization, Councilwoman Koski christened the fleet on November 1 and placed them in service. She also placed the first dent in one of the bumpers. So you might ask, well, how is it going? How does one measure success in a program like this? Well, I can tell you that it fits with the organization like a glove, because it gives us full command and control over every aspect of the service, from the time we arrive on the scene, through all the treatment, and until the patient is delivered to the emergency room. During that time, our residents and guests are being cared for by some of the best paramedics possible, who are each highly trained and dedicated to the profession. Here are the stats by ambulance squad by month. They certainly have been busy, and the troops are doing an excellent job keeping up. This is statistically in line with our estimates of 10,300 transports projected in year one. However, there are peak times that are stressing the system, requiring help from either universal ambulance or mutual aid from other fire departments. And during snowstorm, we place Squad 1 in service, so it has four incidents on its own. Another important way to measure the success of the program is financially. After all, this was developed as a business proposal, which forces us to look at it financially. In regards to revenue, it takes a time to set up the proper accounts in the various insurance companies, and there are still some pending payments expected. I am told that after eight or nine months, we should start seeing more stable statistics each month. For services rendered up until February 28, Accumed Build on behalf of Sterling Heights $1.5 million worth of services. With what we have collected and what we anticipate collecting, the estimated collections are just over $1 million for that time period. As the number of transports, this too is in line with our estimate of $3 million revenue in year one. The operating costs were $615,000 for that period, which places the net operating revenue at $454,000. However, as you are aware, there was a significant amount of capital outlay for this project, roughly $1.2 million. It is estimated that it would take a few years to reach breakeven, if you will. Not considered in this equation was, is the $249,000 we have received so far from the SAFER grant. Since this is a one-time, three-year grant, we didn't include it so as not to skew the financial performance of this program. In addition, the QOP, or Quality Assurance Assessment Program, was a possible concern when we were starting the transport program because of the unknown. While the issue has still not been officially finalized, the proposed plan will have no negative impact on the transport program in Sterling Heights. In fact, using the current program plans, it should result in an increase in revenue for Sterling Heights due to the ratio of Medicaid patients we will handle each year. Mayor Taylor, we will continue tweaking many things with this program so that we can maintain the best possible service delivery to the community. I am very pleased with the hard work and the dedication from our staff, and I am very confident that this program will be a huge success for years to come. Moving into the proposed budget, there are some significant capital expenditures that I would like to highlight. We have a new fire engine in the budget that we will begin to spec soon. This will replace the frontline engine at Fire Station 1 that is 13 years old, and that engine will be placed in reserve status, and we will sell a 20-year-old engine that is currently in reserve status. A significant purchase for both police and fire in the proposed budget is for mobile and portable radios. Radios are a very important lifeline to the first responders. The current radios are reaching the end of their useful life and may not be able to be serviced very soon. In the Fire Department, we cannot change radios a few at a time, because our employees need to be able to operate the portable radios in zero visibility. Due to that fact, I cannot advocate a system where we would have different models of radios that our employees would be expected to operate in hazardous environments. The proposed budget allows us to replace all radios at one time. The radios that were taken out of service will be used by DPW and also our ESOG and MST groups. The budget also includes capital purchases for a generator at Station 3 and commercial washer and dryers for all five stations. These washer and washers and dryers will allow us to save money on the current linen service, because each station will clean their own items. In addition, they will be useful in cleaning items on the ambulances that may have become contaminated. Mayor Taylor, there are many great things happening around the city, and these are exciting times. With these changes, the various city departments need to adapt their services to these new changes. This is no different for the Fire Department. We must continue providing the current services and adapt to the new challenges being proposed by being prepared. One of these, one item addressed in the proposed budget is to supply equipment and training for the Fire Department to better respond to emergencies on the Clinton River. With the new kayak and canoe rentals, the Clinton River will be busy with action. Most of the time, the river allows for a tranquil and peaceful cruise. However, when water levels rise, there's a significant increase in the flow, which also attracts fund seekers and adds to the dangers. One thing I know about firefighters is that when they are faced with rescue challenges, not to act is never an option. They will do what they can, so it is our responsibility to give them the proper equipment and the training so that they can have the tools to do things as safe as possible. The response to incidents in the river is also being discussed with our neighboring departments, and I foresee a collaborative effort of some kind in this area in the near It is no secret that the police and Fire Departments across the nations are having difficulty with recruiting. The city is also looking at options for minority recruiting as well. The Fire Department will be partnering with Macomb Community College in their college work-study program, which will allow us to bring onboard some interns that are interested in the fire service. They can provide meaningful work for us in data entry and mapping of thousands of our businesses while at the same time being exposed to the fire service. While there is no guarantee that these individuals will end up amongst our ranks as a career, we have seen some successes, some successes with this in other departments. The proposed budget also allows for another set of bulletproof vests for the Rescue Task Force concept. Sterling Heights Police and Fire are among the few departments in our area that have developed plans for and have trained on the Rescue Task Force concept. With recent events, we are involved in development of plans to have all departments in the county on the same page with this concept. Clearly, any situation like this anywhere in the county will require the response from many different agencies. The only way to expect a successful outcome is with a coordinated policy and training. We implemented the Safe Sleep Program in the past year, and we plan to segue that into the Safe Child Program. The goal is to provide, to provide useful information for keeping children of all ages safe by using public services, service announcements geared to the time of year. For example, pool safety in the spring and Halloween safety in the fall. We hope to provide tips for keeping our most precious residents safe. We are pleased to bring back the Civilian Fire Academy, which will take place in late summer, fall of this year. This is a very important initiative that educates the public on what the Fire Department does. Bonus points for whoever can pick out SHTV's own Dan Riz in this nineteen ninety-nine photo. Lastly, Mayor Taylor, we are currently working with the Macomb County Department of Roads on a very interesting project. We have looked at ways to enable our emergency vehicles to control traffic signals in the past, but these programs have always been very cost-prohibitive. This is because any program would need to outfit not only the apparatus but each intersection with the needed hardware. However, there is new technology out there that has several uses, and because of that, the Department of Roads has been approved for a grant to outfit all intersections in our city and eventually the entire county with this hardware. What this means for us is that we will only need to outfit the apparatus with the equipment to communicate with the traffic lights. The goal is to give the various fire trucks the green light for any traffic light that they are approaching when they are responding with their lights and sirens on. This initiative has many benefits. Of course, having the Fire Department arrive as soon as possible to various incidents can save lives and reduce loss. That's for sure. Having the, having the response be as safe as possible is also very important. While thankfully collisions between fire trucks and personnel, personal vehicles are rare, they do occur, and the results can be deadly. However, what is common is collisions among various vehicles on the road. When an emergency vehicle suddenly appears at an intersection, it causes various reactions from the drivers. Complicated by distracting driving, accidents are all too common, some routine and some are very bad. For example, this accident at Fourteen Mile and Mound was a result of a car that stopped for an ambulance and a semi truck that could not. Luckily, no one was killed. In addition to the dangers to travelers, these accidents cause traffic delays and an unknown amount of money for repairs. Not only will the hardware on the fire trucks communicate with traffic lights, this technology will also allow the fire trucks to warn drivers and new model, model vehicles with the car's heads-up display and audio systems alerting the drivers to approaching emergency vehicles. At a cost of thirty-six hundred dollars per vehicle, we will, we will outfit all eighteen fire apparatus in the proposed budget. In addition, we are seeking funding for this project through the RAP grant from the MMRMA. Mayor Taylor and members of council, this concludes my presentation this evening, and I will remain available for questions.
And Mayor, continuing on, the Sterling Heights Initiative for Neighborhood Excellence, better known as SHINE, was started about ten years ago. It is a multifaceted program which has resulted in thousands of homes being cleaned up and millions of dollars reinvested in properties throughout the city. And at this time, our City Development Director, Jason Castor, will provide an update of many initiatives going on over the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mayor Taylor, members of council. I would like to begin my presentation with a brief video, providing an overview of how the code enforcement process works and highlighting some of the day-to-day activities.
The city of Sterling Heights has always recognized the vital importance of code enforcement in preserving a high quality of life throughout the community. Our codes and ordinances have evolved over the years to protect a property owner's investment, promote public health, safety, and welfare, enhance the quality of life in our neighborhoods, educate residents, and perform neighborhood outreach. Each inspector is responsible for all code-related issues in their assigned neighborhoods, not only proactively inspecting homes, street by street, but also responding to complaints, monitoring foreclosure activity, tagging property for high grass, and removing illegally posted signs in the public right-of-way. The process of code enforcement is, first, a complaint is received or a violation is proactively viewed by the inspector. The inspector confirms the existence of the violation and mails the property owner a notice of violation. The property owner has seven to ten days to correct the violation. If the property owner contacts the inspector and is making attempts to correct the violation, the inspector will grant the property owner a reasonable time extension to complete the work. If the property owner is not making reasonable progress or any progress whatsoever, the case is then referred to the Ordnance Board of Appeals. The agenda for the Ordnance Board of Appeals meeting is posted on the property and a lawn sign is displayed. If the property owner has complied, the property is removed from the Ordnance Board's agenda and the case is closed. If the property owner has not complied or has only partially complied, the case remains on the agenda for the meeting. The property owner has an opportunity to plead their case to the board at the meeting. The Ordnance Board of Appeals may grant a property owner additional time or move for immediate abatement. If the board moves for immediate abatement, a work order is prepared and set to a city contractor who will correct the violations for the property owner within ten days of the meeting at the property owner's expense. Code enforcement also works with our police department in issuing tickets for those residents who choose not to remove their vehicle from the public roads during a declared snow emergency. Vehicles that stay in the road dramatically slow down the process of plowing snow from the streets. The city has approximately two thousand non-homestead properties, which will now be inspected every other year to ensure they are maintained to the city's standards. Code enforcement is making a difference in keeping up properties in Sterling Heights. In two thousand seventeen, code enforcement inspected ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one properties, resulting in one hundred and one properties being abated. Ninety-nine percent of code complaints are cleaned up by the property owner.
I would like to thank Community Relations and Sterling Heights TV for helping get that video prepared for tonight. Every single community in the United States faces struggles with property maintenance and code enforcement, and Sterling Heights, we are not immune. However, we have a highly effective code enforcement team dedicated to providing a safe, quality environment while improving the appearance, appearance of the community and preserving property values. How can you not notify the city of a potential violation? If you are in the city and want to contact code enforcement regarding a potential issue, you can notify code enforcement in a variety, in a variety of ways, some of which include contacting the city development or City Hall, letting us know through social media or posting on C Click Fix. All complaints are inspected, if not currently in the system. As mentioned in the video, all code officers are, are assigned certain sections in the city and responsible for all code-related issues in their assigned areas. Proactive enforcements are generated by code officers when they notice a violation out on inspection or while canvassing, canvassing their assigned areas. Properties which fail to address issues are forwarded to the Ordnance Board of Appeals. We have an ordinance in place that gives us the ability to take properties that fail to comply to our Ordnance Board of Appeals, in which we will typically clean up the property if they don't voluntarily comply. This process is different than other communities which forward their cases to court, which, depending on caseload, could delay the cleanup. Our Ordnance Board is comprised of five individuals appointed by City Council who are passionate about resolving blight and directly improving the quality of the surrounding properties. In the last four years, open cases have been trending downward but seem to have settled around three hundred. In two thousand fourteen, we noticed a high amount of Ordnance Board cases due to the revamped code process in which hiring of part-time code enforcement allowed the building inspectors who are assisting with code enforcement to return to reviewing building plans, building inspections full-time. The reduction in cases is attributed to the continued effort to fight blight in the city in addition to the properties owner, property owner's cooperation in cleaning up prior to the city having to use our abatement contractor. We are averaging ninety-eight percent compliance prior to going forward the Ordnance Board. Here are some examples of residential properties that have been cleaned up by our abatement contractor. You can see in the before pictures on the top, lack of landscaping maintenance, driveway weeds, some trash and debris in the driveway. The after pictures show the property cleaned up with grass cut, driveway crack weeds removed, and bushes trimmed. Here are some pictures of a backyard cleanup. The pictures on top show overgrown bushes and shrubs, outdoor storage, and a pool left in disrepair, in addition to a large amount of trash and debris that is collected in a walkout basement patio. The after pictures show the amount of work that went in to help this backyard look like it was taken at a different house. Another cleanup shown here had a garage and tree with graffiti painted on them, which were addressed by our abatement contractor, in addition to some landscaping along the side of the house with tall weeds and a broken gutter that were removed and the area was, was restored with mulch. Commercial properties also need to be cleaned up from time to time. Shown here is a large commercial cleanup with overgrowth of grass and weeds adjacent to the building and in, and parking lot cracks, storage of trash and debris around the parking lot, and unkept landscaping. The after pictures below show the great improvement to this property. Here are some additional photos from this large cleanup showing more parking lot weeds, piles of trash and debris scattered around the property. The after picture of the rear yard of this property shows a much improved appearance. These pictures show how mulch and trimming of shrubs can improve the look of an unkept parking lot island. Here are a few before and after pictures of a large cleanup providing another example of the positive impact from cleaning up these properties. The existing conditions around the dumpster is disgusting, and if left in this condition, could bring rodents into the area. The broken dumpster enclosure and gates were painted and rehung. The front landscaping, which was wildly overgrown, was also addressed. Majority of violations found throughout the city are a result of proactive enforcement. The last four years, between sixty-eight to seventy-five percent of all cases were a result of proactive inspections, remaining cases coming from phone calls, social media, and C Click Fix. In two thousand seventeen, four hundred and forty-five complaints were submitted via C Click Fix. Each case will often require follow-up inspections to verify progress. Annual code enforcement inspections per year is around twenty thousand, with each inspector, inspector performing around two thousand inspections apiece. In two thousand seventeen, the number of total inspections was less than twenty thousand as a result of being down a code officer due to, being down code officers due to resignations and a retirement. So who is, who are your code enforcement officers? Shown here is nine of our eleven officers. This team is led by our recently promoted code enforcement coordinator, Dana Vietto, who is present here with us in the audience tonight. This group of highly motivated enforcement officers responds to a wide variety of complaints. This year, we will be adding a new code officer to the team to focus on running the Noxious Weeds Program. Last year, code enforcement assisted DPW with the administration of this program, tagging residential properties in violation. This year, Noxious Weeds will be one hundred percent run out of neighborhood services. The Noxious Weed process begins in March and includes advertising three times in the city's newspaper that grass over six inches in length will be cut. This is followed by the tracking and forwarding of the list of properties tagged from all code officers, May through November, to the contractor for service. Once properties are cut, invoices are sent to the corresponding properties. Then the Noxious Weed code officer will follow up with the administration of this program in addition to performing miscellaneous canvassing, tagging, and handling all the phone calls. In two thousand seventeen, one thousand three hundred and sixty properties were tagged for tall grass. Shown on the screen is a per-month breakdown of properties tagged. Last year, seventy percent of the properties were tagged were brought into compliance by the property owner. In addition to properties tagged for service, there are seven hundred and fifty vacant parcels scattered around the city that are monitored for compliance with the Noxious Weed ordinance. May is typically the busiest month with the commencement of the Noxious Weed Program. Here are some examples of properties that have been cut. In the pictures, you will notice a stake with colored tape on the bottom to display the length of grass in the picture. Here is a vacant field cut showing the grass was over twelve inches tall when serviced. These pictures of front yards, a front yard show how something as simple as cutting the grass can improve the appearance of a house. Residential rear yards will sometimes get tall as property owners only cut the front yard to avoid detection from code enforcement, but the scene here, we do eventually find Our code enforcement officers are inspecting over two hundred apartment and condominium developments in the city with their regular canvassing. These properties are often maintained by the association company in charge of the development. Occasionally, we have some developments that require additional assistance from code enforcement to address maintenance issues. We are currently providing bi-weekly inspections on Sterling Woods and Sterling Manor condominiums. Sterling Woods is a large three hundred unit development, and inspections were increased here in two thousand fifteen. Prior to two thousand fifteen, we were averaging around seven inspections per year. This has increased to over forty inspections a year since two thousand fifteen. The responsibility for the correction of issues is split at this location between the property owners and the association. We have noticed some improvements here in the past few years with the increased inspections resulting in street trees planted, some minor street repairs, and prompt response with violation notices sent to the association. Sterling Manor is another development where we have increased our inspections in recent years. This was originally, originally built as an eighty-unit apartment and then converted into a condo development. In the past two years, we have issued many notice of violations as a result of the seventy-eight inspections performed. Issues include trash and debris pickup, junk vehicles, holiday decorations, and landscape maintenance. This property was sent to over five times in the past two years. Recently, we have acquired a direct contact with the maintenance company where we can send issues directly for an expedited cleanup. An inspection team consisting of Fire Department, Building Department, and Code Enforcement visited this property, generating a complete list of issues for this property to address. These issues were from exterior property and building violations within, inside the buildings as well. This property has been making progress with the interior, health, and safety issues, and will start to address the exterior issues with the weather turning nicer. The last four years, over thirty-nine thousand enforcement cases were generated. This data has provided us the ability to determine what the most common offenses are. Of the twenty-eight categories tracked, here is a list of the most common enforcements This list is consistent with the two thousand seventeen residential survey report where residents responded the most emphasis, emphasis in code enforcement over the next two years should be on the cleanup of litter and debris on... of litter and debris on residential properties and mowing of grass and weeds on residential property. This list also supports the findings from the 2030 visiting process where the SWAT analysis revealed concerns with residential and commercial property maintenance. Thus, through code enforcement, we work to provide well-maintained and desirable neighborhoods. In conclusion, code enforcement is a collaborative effort spanning almost every department in the city, which can be directly attributed to the success of the program and the cleanup of many properties. With continued collaboration, this program can continue to be successful fighting blight and preserving residential and commercial property values through the enforcement of the city's ordinances and property maintenance code.
And you can see the city development department is having a major impact throughout the community with all these efforts that fall under the SHINE program. Sterling Heights is experiencing unprecedented economic development activity as evident by the impressive amount of home construction, commercial development, and massive manufacturing investments totaling billions of dollars the last few years. Our building official, Mike Viszankow, will now provide an update on all of our building activities.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kraszewski. Tonight, I'd like to share with you the economic growth that has taken place within the city of Sterling Heights, with the involvement of the building department. For quite some time, many people have had the perception that the city of Sterling Heights was all built up and developed, and there was no more land available. After this presentation tonight, you will realize that that perception is far from the truth. As the nation recovered from the economic downturn, the city of Sterling Heights also saw consistent growth in construction. As we review the projects back to 2013, you will notice an upward trend to improve the city of Sterling Heights, and was to prove that the city of Sterling Heights was emerging and on his way back to a vibrant community again. This can be contributed to the multi-use development opportunities available in the city of Sterling Heights. Our industrial corridor has gained popular notoriety and has become a focal point for national businesses to relocate into. The increase in construction activity can be seen throughout the city, including residential, commercial, and industrial. When you factor in future projects proposed, this trend will continue and be the case for years to come. Looking back at historical data, in 2013 and 14, the building department had construction projects valued between $32 and $38 million. Taking notice of the increase in activity in 2015 and 2016 had also proven that the city of Sterling Heights was becoming the city that developers wanted to work in. Looking at the construction values, it had almost doubled from the previous two years. In 2017, construction values increased significantly from the previous years to almost $89 million. When there is a large increase in construction activity, the direct effect is the increase for the department. From the time the applications, permits, and plans are submitted to the city development until the building receives a certificate of occupancy. Taking a look at the inspections performed will help validate that. When we speak of valuations of a project, it's the value of the project given following the National ICC evaluation data. Recently, Mitchell Plastics completed their new building that houses both offices and large shops that is used for parts manufacturing. This building is over 200,000 square feet, located off 17 Mile Road between Mound and Van Dyke. Matalsa, another direct parts supplier for SCA, has also recently completed their new distribution building, which distributes truck frames to the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant for the Dodge Ram. That building is just over 160,000 square feet, located in the back northwest corner of the development site. Both of these developments are located within the same property that once was the Sunnybrook Golf Course and is now known as the Sterling Enterprise Park. South of the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant across Metro Parkway, there is a plant that is nearing completion. It's being occupied by a company called Ground Effects and is about 128,000 square feet. They install accessories for the Ram pickup truck, as well as spring and bed liners. They have also been busy with several construction projects within the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant property, and include retooling of the body shop and paint shop to accommodate the new Dodge Ram pickup truck. They also constructed, in addition, 150,000 square foot addition for an enclosed test track for the Dodge Ram pickup. There has been significant growth in the industrial, commercial, and residential developments. Here are just a few examples of projects within the city. Holiday Inn just recently completed their 56,000 square foot building located on the northeast corner of 15 Mile and Van Dyke. There are also two new commercial buildings on Van Dyke just south of 19 Mile Road. This project was recently completed by Quadrant Development and is almost 117,000 square feet. Mancini built this spec building for future tenants just north of the Quadrant Development Site on Van Dyke. It is about 73,000 square feet and is for shop and office. At the same time these projects were being built, we were also busy inspecting over 800 new residential homes and condos in various locations throughout the city. This includes single-family homes, multifamily condo buildings, and townhouses. Subdivisions that were purchased as part of the economy turnaround include sites like Green Tree Estates located on the corner of Gainesley and Clinton River Road, Petro's Court just to the east of Gainesley and Clinton River, as well as Ashland Meadows, Jamestown, Cobble Creek, and just to name a few more. In addition to the new construction mentioned, there were also an increase in homeowner permit activities, which include residential decks, construction, storage sheds, in-ground, above-ground pools, fencing, residential alterations, and additions. We also had the ongoing furnace and hot water tank replacements and electrical upgrades. Though these are comparably small projects in size, they keep our staff very busy. Recently, True Hotel, pictured here, is a new 46,000 square foot hotel with 98 rooms. This will be the first one opening of its kind in the United States. Just recently, Gallo Properties broke ground on their new apartment complex called Sterling Landing that will have 200 units when it's complete. This is located on the southeast corner of 15 Mile and Van Dyke. The Cadillac Products Building on 15 Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound is also in the redevelopment phase. They lifted the roof over six feet taller so that it becomes more marketable and will perform a complete facade improvement. On Mound Road and Higgins, they have recently began construction of a new 78,000 square foot senior living building. On Van Dyke just north of 14 Mile Road where the red-hot and blue one stood, they are in the construction phase of a multi-tenant building for retail. In regards to multifamily condominiums and apartment construction projects, there are a couple developments. Here is the Palazzolo Brothers constructing Phase 3 of the preserves located on Dobree and Ryan, which will have 162 units when it's complete. The Caldean Catholic Senior Living located on Mirror Road just north of 19 Mile Road will also have 96 rooms when it's complete. Other residential projects being built are Palmer Woods Estate, Palmer Woods Condominiums, Fox Point Condos, Hannabauer Park, Town Village, and Tucson Farms. As projects near completion, there are other projects that are projected to begin. The location occupied currently as Maple Lane's Golf Course will be developed as the Veranda, a Mosheri development that will house a mixture of different types of residential construction. They are proposing 807 units consisting of single-family homes, multifamily condos, townhouses, as well as senior living. On the corner of Dobree and Ryan, Cutler is proposing a 58-unit residential development called Woodland Hills. The city can also expect the northeast corner of 15 Mile and Van Dyke to change dramatically. An additional hotel is proposed to be constructed just west of the recently completed Holiday Inn Express. There will also be two new multi-tenant buildings that will be constructed on the site as well. The site will also be the new headquarters for Christian Financial, which is a two-story 38,000 square foot office building located in the immediate corner of the property. The city will also see the location that was once Liberty Park be redeveloped by Ashley Capital, whom is proposing a 560,000 square foot speculative industrial building. They also are considering the option of expanding the remaining portion of the site to a multi-tenant industrial park, but they will wait till the larger building is complete. On 17 Mile Road just west of Van Dyke, they are proposing redevelopment for three new hotels with the possibility of an office or a restaurant within the site. In the northeast corner of the city, by Lakeside Mall, there will also be noticeable changes into the area. There will be a new three-story 56,000 square foot senior living building constructed on Lakeside Circle. The current Linens and Things Building will be demolished and redeveloped as BJ's Brew House, along with a multi-tenant building immediately adjacent to the west. Mancini Development is planning another new commercial speculative building on Mound and Branch, which will house both office and shop. Not every past, present, or future development has been discussed tonight, but wanted to highlight the projects that will have dramatic impact within the city. I hope that everybody knows what the building department has been part of and will continue to be involved with. We will continue to make, we will continue to work to assist homeowners, developers, builders, to assure that the projects are done properly and successful regardless of their size. As the building department, we are responsible to make sure that the public's health, safety, and welfare are protected by the enforcement of all state adopted construction codes, as well as local ordinances are adhered to. Like I mentioned earlier, the public perception that the city of Sterling Heights is all built up is far from the truth. As a member of our economic development team, it gives me great ability to work with a strong team and help developers and builders on their proposed projects. Whether it's developing a vacant piece of land, redeveloping a site that's requiring buildings to be demolished, or developing a brownfield site, this team is in place to provide the guidance to get their projects complete. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the staff at the city development department. They work hard to make sure projects are successful from the time they submit the permits to making sure records are kept accurately, and the inspection staff that does the plan reviews and field inspections and ensures the buildings are safe for all occupants. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Vanderpoel, and City Council.
You can see there's no question that Sterling Heights is an attraction for developers, businesses, and single-family homes, and it's one of the reasons why our population in the city continues to rise. In fact, SEMCOG estimates that our population will increase to about 140,000, making us the third-largest city in the state. So progress is good, and there's no doubt Sterling Heights is on the move. And with that, we have to focus efforts on infrastructure. There's no question in today's world there needs to be a strong emphasis on maintaining and improving our infrastructure. The proposed budget includes millions of dollars in various infrastructure improvements, including roads. City engineer Brent Bayshaw will now provide an overview of the significant road improvements planned in the proposed budget and a review of the progress we are making with the overall condition of roads in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Kraszewski, and residents of Sterling Heights. I'm here tonight to present the road plan for fiscal year 2018-2019 proposed budget. An outline of the planned road improvements had previously been provided in January at the strategic planning session, however, much has changed over the last few months. As a whole, the changes have been made to the major road network plan, but first of all, I'd like to start with the local road network plan. Safe Streets Millage was passed in 2013, and expenditure began in 2014. Four years of improvement are now complete. The funding has allowed for improvements to over 200 local roads from 2014 to 2017. This scrolling list includes all local roads improved in this timeframe. Various repair types have been used that best fit the specific need of each road. This allows for the best possible pavement management of the local roadway network. The 2008 Local Road Improvement Plan provides for over 4.3 million proposed in the budget for local road capital improvements. The plan presented allows for the full concrete reconstruction of the 19-listed roads. Also, 13 roads will receive sectional concrete replacement for a total of 4.13 miles of pavement improvement on 32 roads. Let's now move on to the major road network. First, it would be appropriate to summarize the 2018 Road Improvement Plan as previously presented in January of this year. All of these projects remain in the plan. I'm pleased to say we're off to an early start. The continuation of Dequinda Road widening project began a month ago, as well as the M-59 project. Shana Road asphalt resurfacing north of 15 Mile Road began on March 26, which also includes concrete repairs to Metropolitan Parkway approaches to the Shana Road intersection. Canal Road resurfacing is on schedule to begin in the next month as bids have been received, and this project also includes the resurfacing of Van Dyke Avenue from the Clinton River north to M-59. The remainder of Van Dyke from Clinton River south to 18 Half Mile Road will be completed by the county starting late summer. Stather Drive asphalt resurfacing is on the schedule to start midsummer, and Dodge Park asphalt resurfacing is on the schedule to start late summer. Work on Mound Road between 17 Mile Road and 18 Mile Road is still on for the summer, but we'll talk about more additions to that project shortly. The budget contains various concrete repairs scheduled around the city this year, and two projects that are scheduled to begin early in 2019. Merrill Road will see rehabilitation from 19 Mile Road to M-59, and 14 Mile Road will be resurfaced between Dequinda Road and Ryan Road. The total road expenditure, including city costs and other funding sources, totals over $20 million. All of the 2018 projects are progressing for the year as planned in January, but the plan had to be, had to become dynamic to account for the unforeseen circumstances that occurred this winter. As we all know, the 2018 winter wreaked havoc on our area roads and created emergency situation with the roadways. December began with sub-zero weather, which created a deep frost layer in the ground, and unseasonably warm and rainy weather emerged in late January and extended into February, and then temperatures hovered around freezing, creating numerous freeze-thaw cycles, and this all led to accelerated road deterioration, especially in the roads in poor condition. So the result was an early and extensive pothole season. Due to the continued wet weather, cold patching was not very effective. Potholes created vehicular damage and dangerous roadway conditions that left vehicles stranded on roads, with drivers in danger, and was a major concern to first responders. The local economy was affected, as well as large industry. Mound Road, a county road, was hit up particularly hard.
Fox 2 viewers say Mound Road ranks the worst when it comes to potholes. In fact, they say it's so bad, many drivers just avoid traveling that area altogether, and that means businesses could be taking a hit. Fox 2's Charlie Langton has more.
On a 1 to 10, 10 being the worst, they're absolute worst.
And that's coming from the guy who's in charge of fixing the roads here in Macomb County. People want to know, when are you going to fix them?
That's funny.
Not really, especially Mound Road.
It's like you're riding down a train, Jack.
Unless you drive a huge truck, your car is going to be destroyed and you'll have to add a new front end.
And the people that cold patch the potholes are the same people that remove the snow, and with all the snow, some of the workers are still blowing.
So we still have people in subs. We should finish those up today, and then we'll just put every available person we have and every truck that we have that can haul, patch on those roads to make sure we can patch them.
Oh, no. Businesses here on Mound Road hope they can hurry up and patch because it's affecting them. them.
Just fix them, please. You know, let everybody drive in and let everybody want to come into karate school. Bring their kids.
All of our popular dishes, pad Thai, fried rice.
No one's buying it now because of the roads.
Mm-hmm. Even carryout's been slow.
Now, to be fair, weather plays a role in patching the roads, and until the temperatures are steady, cold patch has to be used, but that's not as good as hot asphalt, which will probably be used in April. Then will Mound Road be smooth?
You've got to know the difference between potholes and bad pavement, but we use hot asphalt. That'll seal the holes up until the next frost comes, which is probably November.
Authorities say to really fix these roads, these cold patch, hot patch, no. You need an entire new road, but that's something that Lansing would have to deal with, and it's going to cost a lot of money.
If you have any health problems in regards to riding down mound, they'll get worse riding down it.
We've had a crew on mound today, yesterday. We'll have crews all week, and it'll look like we haven't even been there. That's how bad it is.
In Sterling Heights, Charlie Langton, Fox Two News.
So while this video was being aired in January, the city was busy working hard to find solutions to address these emergency conditions throughout the city, both as immediate solutions and long-term solutions, to ensure another winter like this is best avoided in the city of Sterling Heights. The city identified the most dangerous areas and made a plan. Many of the worst roads in the city are county roads, and the city partnered with Macomb County to accelerate county road improvements. A unique plan was formulated for Mound Road and presented to the county. The plan included accelerating federal funds to provide an asphalt resurfacing of Mound Road between Fourteen Mile Road and Eighteen Mile Road. The plan needed support and assistance at the highest state level, which Mayor, Mayor Taylor, City Council, County Executive Mark Hackel were able to secure. The result is Mound Road will not be, not be resurfaced this summer, and will provide years of relief until funding for the reconstruction project is secured. The state was also busy securing funds to provide concrete repairs to M-59 east of Van Dyke, which, which was secured, and the work will occur this summer, mostly at night, mostly as night and weekend work. The city moved fast to address city roads. Nineteen Mile Road west of Hayes is a road that saw major deterioration this winter. The city was able to take advantage of a hot mix asphalt contractor that opened up their plant to service MDOT to provide repairs to I-696 this winter. Contractor put a crew together to provide repairs to this stretch of Nineteen Mile Road, and the work was done at night to not disrupt traffic on this highly traveled route. Repairs were also needed on Ryan Road between Seventeen Mile, Eighteen, and Eighteen and a Half Mile Road. On March 20th, a contract, a concrete contractor began removal replacement of the worst pavement. Seventeen Mile Road east of Van Dyke was targeted for road, was a targeted road for concrete replacement. The contractor began work on this road on March 20th as well. Eighteen and a Half Mile Road west of Van Dyke was also targeted for concrete repairs. Contractor mobilized on March 20th to address these deteriorated areas. In total, over 12 million will be spent on these emergency repairs from various funding Within the proposed budget is a one-time millage increase to provide $4.2 million in additional road funding to address roads in need of immediate repair. This funding would provide for the majority of the city costs needed to complete the following projects. Resurfacing of Seventeen Mile Road from Utica Road to the improvements underway east of Van Dyke. This road improvement would begin in the summer of 2018. Fifteen Mile Road resurfacing from Maple Lane Drive to Shana Road. This project would also begin in the summer of 2018. Metro Parkway pavement rehabilitation east of Van Dyke. Both the eastbound pavement and the westbound pavement would be addressed through either concrete repairs or asphalt resurfacing in 2018. Utica Road from Shana, Shana Road to Dodge Park. A new asphalt surface would be provided to this road in 2018. Nineteen Mile Road from Hayes to Shana would be resurfaced in 2019 with existing asphalt. Existing concrete section would be milled and resurfaced, and the existing asphalt section would be pulverized and resurfaced as well. Shana Road Asphalt Resurfacing from Plum Brook Road to Nineteen Mile Road would be completed in 2019. Project would pick up at the ending point of the 2018 project currently under construction and proceed north to Nineteen Mile Road. Lastly, in 2019, Utica Road from Van Dyke Avenue to Dodge Park Road would be resurfaced In total, the $4.2 million of city, of city road funding financed by the one-time millage increase would leverage an additional 12.6 million in roadwork, which includes other jurisdictional participation. In summary, the fiscal year 2018-2019 proposed road project calls for 20.025 million in major road projects. Much of the 2018 work is underway, and all projects shown in orange are provided within the budget. An additional 12.27 million in emergency roadwork shown here in green is complete, underway, or planned for 2018. 4.37 million in capital local road projects are planned for fiscal year 2018-2019 for a total of 36.66 million in total cost, including all funding sources. Fiscal year 2018-19 budget also includes a one-time millage increase that will generate 4.2 million in major road funding that will be utilized to leverage another 12.6 million in road projects shown here in blue. The complete fiscal year 18-19 budget totals nearly 50 million in road improvement projects. This concludes the fiscal year 18-19 road plan, and thank you for your time.
And Mayor, in conclusion, I just wanted to talk briefly about the statewide challenges with road funding. Just by way of background, there was new legislation passed in 2015 that, over a period of time through 2021, adds about $1.2 billion in new road funding to the state of Michigan, which is then dispersed to entities throughout the state. Half of the amount comes from an increase in the state gas tax, and half comes from increased license fees, which is somewhat concerning because that will eventually come out of the state's general fund, which may or may not be dispersed by the state. The problem with the $1.2 billion, although it's a step in the right direction, all the studies that have been done statewide indicate that we really need about $3 billion in new road funding statewide. So, the $1.2 billion gets us about halfway there, but it really doesn't solve the problem, unfortunately, and thus, cities across the state like Sterling Heights continue to struggle with some of these major road improvements. The gas tax through the legislation increased from 19 cents per gallon to approximately 26 cents per gallon, about a seven-cent increase. Michigan now has the 13th highest gas tax in the country, and when you consider the at-pump price, the fifth highest, because Michigan applies the 6% sales tax at the gas pump as well. So, here's a chart illustrating where the gas tax goes. Again, it's about, in this example, 52 cents or so on a gallon of gas goes to various taxes. First, the Michigan fuel tax of approximately 26 cents, 23.7 cents goes to roads, 2.2 cents goes to transit. The Michigan sales tax, which, by the way, this is applied pursuant to the state's charter. It's not a state statute. It was actually the, the state constitution approved by voters. So, 10.5 cents goes to fund schools and other entities across the state, and half a cent goes to transit. And then there's the federal gas tax at 18.4 cents, 15.5 cents goes to roads, and 2.9 cents goes to transit. So that's how the state gas tax breaks down per gallon of gas. Essentially, that revenue is poured into a funnel, if you will, and it disperses out to entities across the state pursuant to Public Act 51, and in the case of Sterling Heights, we get just over now for the next year, $11 million pursuant to Public Act 51. And then in Sterling Heights, there also is a local millage called Safe Streets for neighborhood roads, which I'll touch on in a second. That's 3.3 million a year. We have bond proceeds, and all these miscellaneous revenue sources for Sterling Heights add up to about $19 million annually, but you can see just by this year where City Engineer mentioned, we're spending almost $50 million in various roadway improvements in Sterling Heights, that this formula, especially the amount that comes from the state, just isn't quite working. And I want to emphasize this once again. Some have asked, well, where is the Safe Streets Millage going? What, what are the improvements that are being made? And you can see since 2013, this list of roads, local roads, that have been improved, improved throughout the city, it doesn't include the next-year local road project. It is an impressive list. Many roads have been improved under the Safe Streets Millage, which is going to expire in 2019, and undoubtedly will need to be renewed. So where does that leave us? It leaves us with the need to invest approximately another $4 million to leverage 12 million in additional improvements, and that is proposed in the budget through the one-mill increase, and it funds the roads that are before you. It equates to, for the average-priced home, $92 one-time. The proposal then is to roll back this millage next year, and it will then be eliminated. Again, this is a one-time need. We believe after these improvements, we'll be really up to speed, especially on the county roads that are in such poor shape now. Shana will be in decent shape by then, Mound Road, North Van Dyke, Utica Road, and we're working on a plan with the county to get Eighteen Mile Road done next year as well. So, that is why this is proposed for one year only. I should mention that the Safe Streets Millage cannot be used for major roads. It was intended to be only for local neighborhood roads. The millage that we're talking about now, the one-time millage, will be for the major roads that we've highlighted. It's important to note with respect to the one-mill that businesses, that it will apply to businesses as well, so the, the business community will pay approximately 30% of the $4.2 million raised by the one-mill. In terms of approval, this one-mill is within the city's charter limit. So when the charter was approved by the voters, the voters said the city council and the city could go up to a given limit, 12 mills at that time, but couldn't go higher. So this is within that limit. The voters have already given the city the approval to do this through the annual budget appropriation process, so thus, that's the reason there isn't a need for a vote, vote of the people per se, because the vote, as in essence, already occurred via the charter. So, Mayor, in conclusion, we are available now to address any questions that the city council may have, or, or residents, and I do want to remind City Council that the appropriation ordinance needs to be introduced this evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool, and to members of the city administration and the city directors and managers for your presentations tonight. Thank you very much. Very thorough and a lot of exciting things going on. At this time, I will open it up to the audience, to anyone who would like to speak on any of the presentations in tonight's budgets. If you'd like to speak, you could raise your hand or just kind of mosey on up. Why don't we take you, sir? You're already up here. For those that don't know, there, there are a few new individuals at our meeting tonight. We do have a four-minute speaker time limit, so that's going to, you're going to see on the machine in front of you, you'll have a green light for the first three minutes, the last minute, you'll have a yellow light, and then when your time's up, the red light will come on, and I ask that you respect the time limits tonight. So, go ahead, sir.
My name is George Lewis. I'm a Sterling Heights resident since November of 1983. A lot of information has been presented today, and it seems like a priority with the council and maybe the residents of Sterling Heights has been recreation. We heard a lot about recreation, and one of the things that I heard and I took to note of, 7.6 million dollar increase in the recreation fund for this upcoming year. Well, it would seem to me that, being real simple, I could delay the appropriation for the recreation. I could take that 7.6 million dollars and put it towards the road repair. I wouldn't have to stress the voters of Sterling Heights to increase taxes by $92. When you talk about road repair in the wintertime, all they did was take some hot asphalt or some cold patch and throw it in the, the holes. I didn't see anybody that took some compressed air and got the water out, got the debris out, tamped the cold patch repair down, or even rolled it with a roller. We just threw it down. Let the people driving down the road mash the stuff down into the, into the holes and see if that's going to be a adequate repair. Mound Road, I think that was repaved. It's been cut up last five years, within five years. There's no warranty on the materials used, the labor that was put down. I don't see anybody going after the contractor for some warranty money. And then you say that business is going to contribute 30%. With all the business in the industry in this city, they're only going to contribute 30%? Why can't we increase it to 50%? And then the other thing, you want to generate some revenue? Why don't you look at the trailer license plates on the trucks going into Sid, to Sterling Heights Assembly that Fiat Chrysler runs? A lot of them are SPD trailers. You know what that means? Sequence parts delivery. You know where they come from? Suppliers that are right inside Sterling Heights. You know where the license through? Pennsylvania, Tennessee. I don't see any Michigan license plates on those trailers. Now where's that revenue going? That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next on this item? Take you, sir.
Pete Meyer, Sterling Heights resident. Mr. Vanderpool, it was a very good presentation you put together, outlining where the money comes from and where it's going. I'm a little appalled that tax money for our ga, from our gas tax actually goes anywhere other than the roads, and I know that's been going on for a while. But what really bothers me is the fact that I've already paid for gas tax, and then I'm paying it again with the, the increase from the state, and then I'm paying it again with my registration, and now the city's asking me to pay some more. And Mark Hackle wants some also, because I've heard him talk about it. So, five times to cover the roads is a little ridiculous. What I'm curious about is the presentation you put together for the roads, you never addressed the real problem. You can dump all that money, all you want, into those roads, and we'll be right back in five years, because asphalt only has a five-year lifespan, provided it's maintained. What about these heavy trucks that are going to run these, these roads? And just pulverize that, that asphalt into nothing? We don't maintain our roads because we don't, we don't tar the cracks, and they fill with the water in the winter, and then they- in the winter, and then they expand at night and blow them apart. We don't maintain our roads. So the millions of dollars you want to spend, sir, will just be in vain until we address the real problem. And that problem lies up in Lansing, because they don't want to reduce the truck limits on their weights. So I'm a little concerned about even ninety-two dollars, which, you know, for me is nothing, but maybe some in our, in our community it might be a bit much. I don't know. I'm not in favor of it. I'm sure you'll pass it. But I think that the problem is much larger and it's not getting really addressed by ninety-two dollars. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Smith?
Well, it's a little hard to, hard to reply.
All right, just give it a second. Try now.
It's working here. Okay. Well, it's a little hard to reply to hour and a half of presentations in only four minutes. But let's take a look at the history of things here. Nineteen ninety-eight, under Steve Duchaine, who for some reason they didn't like him because he got his degree off the internet or something. But they got rid of Steve, but he ran the city under a hundred million dollars, ninety-six million. We brought in a new city manager from Chicago. Immediately, we're up to a hundred and twenty million. Five years later, a hundred and forty-nine million. I got a couple of years on city council. They ran me off, but we got it down to a hundred and thirty-three million when I was on council. But as soon as I was gone, 2017, right back up to normalcy, a hundred and seventy million. And now here, we're coming in for two hundred and thirty-one million dollars. We jumped fifty-two million dollars in two years. That's real cost control. You know, anybody can manage anything with limited money, but in the real world, there's limited money. But our city manager and the city council that rubber stamps everything he says treats this like monopoly money, that geez, we don't have any money for anything. We've gone from ninety-six million to two thirty-one, and we can't fix the streets. Wow. Is this high-tech system's working? Right now, the way I see it, there's actually thirty-five thousand taxpayers in the city. Every man, woman, and child isn't a taxpayer. People that own property are taxpayers. That the tax bill is sixty-six hundred and seven dollars per actual taxpayer. That's what it is. It's not ninety-two cents. Little babies and old people don't pay tax. The guy that owns the property gets the tax bill and pays the tax. We're talking sixty-six hundred dollars a taxpayer. Now let's look at the budget. It says we're taking in a little bit over four million on the park tax, point nine seven mils. So that equates to a tax base of four point seventeen billion. Well, on the ballot, it said the park tax was gonna bring in sixty-one million dollars in twenty years. Well, it's a twenty-year tax. We're bringing in four million this year. So that's, at this rate, we're bringing in eighty million, not sixty-one million on the park tax. And the way new construction's going in and assessments are going up, we'll end up pulling in a hundred million on the park tax. So where's the two and a half million that was in the park budget to begin with? Well, you can run the parks just off the parks tax and fix the roads off of this windfall profit from the park tax. So what have we got here since this council's been in? We had the one point nine mil emergency tax increase, the two and a half mil Safe Streets, the little under a mil for parks, eight tenths of a mil, the tax collection tax, the premium on tax collection. That gets slipped in, but you see it on your tax bill. You got the tax tax, and now we're gonna go to another mil to fix the streets. Well, from that Safe Streets, take that neighborhood money that you've replaced and put it on the main streets. This just can't go on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Marsonak.
I don't know if any of you have seen this morning's Channel Seven News, the big story about Sterling Heights and the tax, proposed tax increase. Well, Channel Seven News took a poll, and the poll was, how many of you would be willing to pay nothing, fifty to a hundred dollars, a hundred or more? Well, I just wanted you to know, and Channel Two's here now, sixty-nine percent said they want to pay nothing. You people have foolishly spent over a million dollars on road art. What the bloody Sam Hill have you people been thinking? I don't know if you're sniffing bicycle seats when you come here. I don't know what's going on. But the people cannot afford another tax increase. And this is what, and you know what? I can't trust you to go only one year. Give me a break. Are you gonna have a sunset clause on it too? I mean, really? One year, right, Mr. Taylor? Well, I have a new, Sterling Heights is gonna be now renamed a new name. And Mr. Taylor, you're gonna be happy. It's gonna be called Michael Taylor's Tax Town. And all of you that are running for reelection, reelection next year, because you all run as a team, well, if you vote for this, it's gonna be Taylor and his tax team. So everyone remember, next year's the city council election year and a mayoral election. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Marsonak. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Couple of things. One is about the building, the building department. In that, his little presentation, he mentioned several hotels being built here in his town. He didn't mention about any, let's say, entertainment section of this city. With all those peoples expected to come in here to this here city, we need an area for entertainment instead of people taking disposable dollars and moving them out of town. We need to keep them here in this here city. I would also like to ask the fire chief to come up here and explain the fire coins that people get for their life-saving rescues, because that's been mentioned over the last few weeks, for him to explain to the whole city how you get one of those coins. As we know, Councilman Shannon said he wasn't gonna give any to any drug addicts, even though they receive life-saving measures. So we'd like to hear him explain that one to the whole city. And finally, we get to the roads here. This one-year tax is not enough, not going to be enough. Because the way I see it is, we have the five-year part of the Safe Streets Millage, and it was supposed to go down after the six-year deal. It's only got one year left. We add four million to that one year. Now we have to come back, because what was said in that Safe Streets Millage was also they had to pay for the fire and the police out of there and the roads out of that millage. You guys haven't explained to us or come up with some kind of plan at this point to come up with what's going to replace the Safe Streets Millage, since it had a sunset clause. And Mr. Vanderpool quietly said it here tonight, that that's gonna have to be replaced. So let's get this done right now. Don't ask for four million, when we all know it's gonna be more, because Mr. Vanderpool and the mayor and the rest of you council people know that you're gonna have to look into the future, and we're gonna have to maintain these. Once we get these roads maintained, there's gonna be others come. We get these fixed up, there's gonna be others that's gonna have to be fixed, and we're gonna have to go back and maintain them. So let's put the brake, pump the brakes on this right quick. Let's sit, let's sit down and get a good plan together. And so this time, I guess, Nate Shannon, you can't say the city council didn't raise the taxes with the people. You guys, this vote is on you guys, not on us. So I don't know how you're gonna get out of that one, big fella. So please, pump the brakes. Let's stop this. Let's sit down and think of a good plan to go on through the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Russo.
As you guys all know, I've been here sixty-two years, and I live on, off of the, probably the worst road in our, in our city, Mound Road. And tuck between that and Merrill Road, which is probably the number two worst road in Sterling Heights. I got one question, and the question is, on this expenditures and other financing uses, why is the Parks and Recreation Department at zero on this? Did that money get dispersed between the rest of this stuff? Or did it get moved into, if it got moved into the Parks and Recs Millage, then what happened to the money that's usually appropriated in our regular budget? Why is it zero? We spent quite a bit of time listening to all the guys that work and gals that work for the city, that do such a tremendous job. I kind of, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but I think it was kind of a waste of time, because we know what kind of work they do. We know everything in this city, how well it operates. That's without a doubt. I know it firsthand, because I do things in this city, and I've worked with all these gentlemen, including Chris, that I don't see here tonight, and they all work great with us, okay? As a resident and somebody that has a business in Sterling Heights and tries to build and improve my little neck of the woods of Sterling Heights. That was kind of a waste, because we didn't need to hear that. This is about a couple of things. This is about, I don't understand how we're putting the cart before the horse. When we did this millage for the recreational plan, we already knew the roads were this bad. So some of these gentlemen do have a good point, the fact that why didn't, why can't we use some of that money toward, toward this road thing? I know it was something that happened, okay? And it sprung up with this bad winter, but why not be able to use some of that money to get us to another point and see for next year what could happen before we go ahead and do all this? And make all this grief for yourselves and for the, for the community? I don't think that we're kind of putting everything in a row to where it makes a lot of sense, okay? And that's what I think a lot of the people. And that gets me to the police department. Now, you want to fix these roads, you want to do all these things with the roads, but we, we have to rely on the police department to control the roads. Are the trucks, have the right licensing that are driving on them? Are the trucks maintaining speeds? Are the trucks staying to the right lane on Mound Road? Or are they blocking the whole, all three lanes and ruining every lane on Mound Road? We don't have that. Merrill Road's getting destroyed for semis going forty-five miles an hour in a thirty-five mile street. So unless you have some cures for these things, don't get spending money on something and then you don't have anything to show how to protect it. And that's how these roads have gotten this bad. We have nothing to protect the roads. And we can't, the police have enough to do without protecting roads. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Russo. Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Eric Briskie II. I've been a longtime resident of Sterling Heights, probably over thirty-five years. I don't come to these things too often, but I do want to address the roads. I'm not against this. I think we do need to do something about these roads. We need to do it now. This is not a new problem. I've lived in Michigan my whole life. I've traveled across the country, working on various construction projects, including highways. And this is one of the worst states in the country for road conditions. It's a lack of maintenance, poor materials, and heavy truck weights, along with our weather. Because Ohio, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, all has the same weather that we have, and we don't, we don't do the right things here. And I'm hoping that in this road projects we're doing, that this does include some annual maintenance, such as tarring, slurry coating, things like that. We used to do that in the city. I remember it when I was a little kid. We used to tar the streets. We don't do that anymore. I don't see tarring crews out here. So if we're gonna spend all this money, raise the taxes, spend all this money, are we gonna maintain what we invested? And the answer is, we haven't done it. And we haven't done it at the state, the county, or the city level in this entire, you know, in this, in this state. We need to do these things. And we need to start with this, if we're gonna do this, we need to start doing that. We need to plan this. You know, we can't just keep throwing, I mean, every year, Mound Road is closed, reduced traffic, restricted traffic, to do saw cut and repair. We saw cut the joints, we replace them, we throw a little quick tar in, and then we don't do anything once the tar or the rubber joint comes out. We leave that hole there until it turns into a pothole, and then we throw a cold pack in it, which we all know doesn't work. Then we even on some of the roads, like Clint River Road, we did a, where we mill out part of the road, put a little asphalt in, and that works for a little while. Or my favorite one was CPR, Concrete Pavement Repair. We did it on Shainer, we did it on Mound, where they just take out half the surface and then spray a little sealer and put it on there. That lasts two years. So we're talking about, we're gonna make this a long-term fix. Asphalt by MDOT's own specifications of a bitumous surface is only a three-year fix. That's it. So if you don't maintain it, it's not gonna last. Concrete is a fifteen-year fix, if it's maintained. And we've seen that, that doesn't actually happen. So, you know, are we gonna do these things? These are questions that need to be asked, because we're gonna raise the taxes, you know, it's gonna happen, but are we gonna do the right thing with the monies that we use? Are we going to fix the roads the right way, not just, for lack of a better term, half-assed? Because that's all we've been doing, not just the city, but everybody. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Jutnik.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council. Mr. Bayshaw, I was at home watching, and you explained everything even to a simple guy like me, and you did a fantastic job. A couple of things. I'm not for another tax increase, but I am not looking forward, I can't drive one more year on these roads. I do a lot of traveling, and when I want to go south or west, I go nineteen, where I live, I go nineteen mile to John R. in Detroit. Oakland County's got great roads. There's nowhere in Sterling Heights you can go where you're not gonna get your car beat up. For me, ninety-two bucks is a deal, because I had to replace two rims and two tires for, I've got a Chevy Malibu, and it's a low car. I don't have a big truck, and so I hit some potholes this winter and it cost me over nine hundred bucks. So for me, a hundred dollars is a deal. So if you're gonna raise our taxes, one mil for one year, if that's gonna fix the roads for me, I'm gonna drive on nicer roads, you go ahead and do it. What I'd like to see, so the council, so you can hold face, I saw the budget, two hundred and thirty-one million. You will be able to do a lot, and a lot of, you'll get a lot of respect back from the residents of the city. There's gotta be a way that you can find a one percent out of a two hundred and thirty-one million dollar budget. You need to work on that budget. If you're asking us to put some more skin in the game, the city's gotta put a little bit of skin in the game. A one or two percent, you work that budget and get a million and a half or two million dollars out of there and put that into the roads also. You gotta find a way to put a few more dollars into the roads. I'll pay my ninety-two bucks, because I cannot drive another year on that. No matter where I go, it's like that. And I also noticed, this would be, this is just another item, Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Bayshaw, you might want to send an engineer to Richard Noddy Highway Road, nineteen-mile Road. It's finally, has some, couple of cracks in it, and there's cracks on the curbs from Mound to Ryan Road. That road is one hundred percent intact, but it won't be in one year from now. I'd like to see somebody take a look at it, and if you find what I think I've seen, I'd like to have you address that issue right now and save that road. And then whoever does this concrete work, I remember when they did nineteen and a half mile road, that's over by where my business is at. And the specifications that you had at that time, as far as I, maybe it was density where you poured cylinder samples. you poured cylinder samples, I remember that the contractor had to rip out huge sections of poured concrete three times. And there was a reason for that, it didn't meet our standards. So whatever they did, they had to rip out huge sections of concrete and completely report. So that was good for us. So nineteen and a half mile road, I don't know, it's maybe only three or four years old, but it's one-hundred percent, it's all buttoned up, and that's the kind of work that I want to see. If you're going to spend the money, spend it wisely. And one last thing, again, council, I want you to find some money. Everybody needs to put a little bit of skin in this game, these are our roads, not just our roads, or your roads too. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jutnik. Anyone else like to speak on this item? You, ma'am?
Hi, my, my name is Janine, I'm a Sterling Heights resident. I just had two things to address. I have no engineering background, I don't know about roads at all, but there's two things I'd like to mention, and the first is, I have a daughter in Vail, Colorado. It thaws, freezes, thaws, freezes, the roads are fine there, they don't use salt. I had a son in Grand Rapids, they don't use salt. I don't know if that's any effect on these roads these days, but it burns me to see a day later when the salt's sitting this high, and it was dumped in excess. The second thing is, I understand the situation we're in, I know money has to be spent, but I think there should be some type of responsibility. I, my suggestion is, when the road is done and completed, a sign be put up, thanks, you know, ABC Construction was responsible for this road, summer of two thousand eighteen. Is, you know, we don't want to shame anybody, but at the same time, some accountability to whoever is doing this work, whoever you're going to hire to do this work. I think that's a good part of the whole situation, is, you know, we all think, well, this road was done then or now. I think having that visibility right in front of us to say, okay, nineteen mile road was done in two thousand whatever, I think that that would be some, you know, accountability. And maybe if you need to shame these people who are doing substandard work, maybe it's time to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this item? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Wanda Turnowski, and I want to, I do live in Sterling Heights, I've lived in Sterling Heights since sixty-nine, and I've never seen the roads so bad as they are now. I just under, I just can't understand how Ontario, Canada, as well as Germany, don't have this problem. And apparently, they must be using better materials or something to do their roads, because there's got to be an investigation in what you're doing poorly, because roads just don't collapse. Now, I work in Warren, I'm thirteen mile road, that has been repaved, and it, because of the weather, I understand, it goes back and forth, I mean, it's, it's getting bad there too again. And Mound is just, you know, from, from where I drive, from twelve and a half to fourteen, it's just unbelievable. And the average person has put into their cars for repairs, as far as I have, over two-thousand dollars. And that's ridiculous. That's because your suspensions are going, your ball joints are going on the wheels, you've got to have that, that's what happened to me. My frame is going because of this. It's unbelievable. My car is two thousand one, yes, but it should not have that kind of problem. And if you want people to buy cars and, and do what they're supposed to do, we want the roads done right. But I don't think we all should have to pay, because we keep paying for everything. We're paying for the water collapsed, which we had nothing to do with, the drains, we didn't put the drains in, but you're going to charge us, you're going to charge us for roads. We didn't have nothing to do with repairing roads. That's wrong. And it should be, it should, it should be a way that you can adjust whatever and do it right, and not charge the taxpayers every time something has to be done. When we have problems at home, we don't come to you and say, hey, I got to have this done, and you got to pay for it, because you're not going to pay for it. And I, I think it's wrong that you have all the taxpayers in the city of Sterling Heights paying all this money and it's not being done right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this item? If not, what I'll do is I'll close that portion and move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction. This is to introduce the fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen appropriations ordinance. Now, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to introduce the appropriations ordinance for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
Support. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
I have comments.
Mrs. Zarco, you want the floor, or Mrs., let me ask Mrs. Koski, do you want the floor first? Or do we? Mrs. Zarco, would you mind if Mrs. Koski had the floor first?
Oh, not at all.
Okay, Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request that the city manager prepare for our next budget meeting, since we'll be dealing with the police department, a budget amendment for the cost of the two school resource officers for our next meeting.
Mr. Koschewski, does this need to take the form of a motion, or is it sufficient for, if the council just unanimously consents to that?
Absent any objection, it's clear direction from council, so we do take amendments at the next meeting, so do appropriate.
Would any council member like to object to putting cops in the schools? Hearing no objection, I think you've got your direction, Mr. Vanderpool. Thank you, Mrs. Koski. If you don't mind, I'll give the floor back to Mrs. Zarco, and we can come back to you. Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I'm going to start with my thank you, so that I don't forget. So I want to thank Ms. Varney, Ms. Shonen Raff, and Ms. Winterstorm for all of the work that they put into this, because this is not easy, and we watch them work on it for hours and hours. Sometimes after we leave our meetings, they're still here working on our budget. Takes a long time to prepare. So I'm going to go through the things that I picked up that I thought were very positive first, and I'm saving roads for last, so I'll just turn them down. First of all, in the clerk's office, the agenda to go is going to be very helpful for, I think, both the council and the residents. We know that we do have a problem sometimes with downloading ours, and if we take notes on it, sometimes the notes disappear because it, we have to, you know, overwrite it. So I think that's a big improvement there. The election process seems like it's going to be beneficial, again, to the users, as well as staff, and I'm very excited about the, us being a place to get a passport. My, I just have a question, so through the chair to Mrs. Riska. Will you be able to do a renewal as well as a new passport process here at the city?
Mrs. Riska.
Yes, you'll be able to file all of your applications, so new and old.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question. In the fire department, Chief Martin, guys have always been doing their own laundry, but now they have bigger machines to do their laundry, because they probably have more of it. I'm excited about the training for the SWIFT water rescue, I think it's something that, that will be needed, and as long as, you know, we prepare ourselves for the opportunity, so if the opportunity ever comes up, I know that our guys will be prepared for it. I'm excited about the intern cadet recruiting, the Safe Sleep, Safe Child program, the Civilian Fire Academy, glad to see that's back happening again, because it really does benefit the residents, and there's always an interest in learning more about the operations of the city. And the green light signals at the intersections, I think, will be helpful, both to the fire department, as well as drivers, who sometimes don't always hear the sirens or see, but they certainly will notice when the light changes. Code enforcement, Mr. Castor, I'm so grateful that you are really on top of this and taking care of what we already have. It's always nice to have new things, but we need to take care of what we have and make sure that other people feel the same pride that we do in taking care of our city. So I'm glad that you're on top of that. Mr. Viszánko, talked about building, certainly is great that we're doing all of these different developments in the city, both commercial, industrial, and residential. Now, I'm going to talk about streets, but before I even do that, our charter, by charter, by vote of the people, when our charter was passed, the residents of this community said the council can levy twelve mils in any budget. For many, many years, we were below that, and it was, we even reduced the millage rate in the good times. Since two thousand and eight, we haven't had good times until now. So we did a lot of things, restructured our government, we have less employees working for us, they have the benefits that they've had as far as retirees and healthcare, all of those have changed. So we did the job that we thought we needed to do in order to work with as little as possible, but still provide the services for the city of Sterling Heights, and to continue to make it the great city that it is. So we have, we are still below that limit, even with this one mil. But it isn't just our problem, and I, and I don't mean to be dramatic about this, but you're sitting here in front of us, telling us, you're making us account for every dime that we spend. We tell you where it goes, how it's being spent, who it benefits, but none of you are upset that we're not getting our equal share from the state. You all voted on that, we all voted on that. We'll give you two percent more in a sales tax, and in return, you're going to give us revenue sharing. Well, guess what? They're not doing it. The state has been balancing their budget on our backs for more years than I've been sitting here. And it doesn't outrage anybody. You're still here telling us that we need to balance the budget, but you're not telling the state that they can't put it on your back, because that's where it ends up. So, in the last MML conference, I was in a session on roads, because it's a hot topic throughout the state, we're not the only, you know, the community that's not getting the funding that they need. Big graph on the wall, told you how much each state in the union was giving to their municipalities, or giving back to their consumers for roads. Michigan was fifty out of fifty, and it was the only state that was in the red, which means even the state that was next to us, which was Ohio, was still putting money into their roads. But Michigan was, actually looked like they were taking money away from us. Hawaii was number one, they put the most into their roads, but I don't know what to tell you, they've got the money from the tourist attractions, so they get, they've got the money to do it. But, I mean, this is what we're saying, is it's, it's a state issue, and we need to do something about it. It's, I, I'm trying to get all my notes together, but it's, I've heard, I did a survey, as, because we knew this was coming, and so I, some of the people that I surveyed, I think only one was definitely against doing anything about the roads and didn't want to pay. But it was contingent, he would have changed his mind, just like some of you, is, what kind of product are you using? What kind of warranty are you getting? And what would the maintenance be after the road is repaired? So I suggested to him, what would you say if this council got a resolution together that we start petitioning the state to open up our weigh stations again, and we won't lower the weight limits on the trucks that come through this state? It's got to start somewhere. And if we're going to go and ask people to put money into fixing our roads, we also need to do something about keeping them in drivable condition. And if, it's got to start somewhere, and if it starts with us, maybe we'll get other communities to get involved and do the same thing. But I want to see weigh stations opened again. When somebody tells me that a police officer can gauge how much a truck weighs, you're not going to tell me that whoever is filling that truck knows that's how, that's how it's gauged, and they aren't smart enough to figure out how to make a truck look less than what it does actually weigh. So they've gotten around, it's like bending, breaking, and manipulating the law. So that's where I, you know, I, do I want to raise taxes? No, I don't. Nobody wants to raise taxes. But y'all has, all have to think about the safety of our community. So it's, I can go along with this, I certainly want everybody to know that this is only a one-year deal. And I don't know if we do have to put that into a sunset clause, like was suggested, or what we need to do, but we need to be very specific about this, that it's only for one year. And let's see. No matter who sat here on council, as far as the administration that we had prior to Mr. Vanderpool and prior to Mr. Duchene, the message was, if we don't need your money, we're not going to ask for it. So in other words, it's like, that's why for years we gave a little bit back. It might not have been much, but we didn't need it, so we gave it back to you. So, um, let's see, there's been, it was brought up that, why don't we take money from recreation and put it into roads? We can't. The two voter-approved millages that we had, because you have to understand, the council did do a one-point-nine to balance us out during the hard, during the difficult times, you know, but we were still below our twelve mils. So actually, a voter of the people said we could do that. The voter of the people said that they want so much money put into recreation in this city. A voter of the people said that they want so much money put into local roads and the replacement of police and firefighters. We cannot change that, we cannot take any money from those funds and use it for anything else. Voters decided that's what they wanted. So those are voter-approved millages that cannot be adjusted. So, then I thought, you know, I was looking at some of these figures, and I wanted to know what the average tax bill, the city portion for a resident, is eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, you can say my tax bill is five thousand, six thousand, three thousand, not all of that is city, is not city taxes. That's what you have to remember, you are paying taxes to other entities. Somebody said, oh, we didn't need the presentation. Mr. Russo, if we didn't do this presentation tonight, there'd be people on the phone tomorrow telling us we are trying to hide something from them. It's a no-win situation. It doesn't, if you think that, I know all these things, there are some people that think we were hiding it, if we didn't do it. The other thing is, is I'm sitting in church on Holy Saturday, and out of the blue, somebody sits next to me that I've never met before in my life, actually introduced himself and said he lives down this, in the same area that Mayor Taylor lives in, and before I even said anything, he said to me, you know what, I think you should assess everybody two-hundred-and-fifty dollars so we can get these roads fixed. Well, I thought, that's pretty good, because we're only going to ask you for ninety-two. So, to me, this has been a topic of conversation, not just with council, not just with administration, but with residents. It's dangerous to drive on the roads that we have now, and we can't depend on anybody else helping us, we have to take care of ourselves. And if we don't take care of ourselves, nobody's going to take care of us. So, off my soapbox, I'm in favor of this, can you tell?
I think so. Anything else, Mrs. Zarco?
Just want to know, without any objections, if we could start working on a resolution to get the weigh stations open and the weight limits lowered.
Yeah, I think we can certainly, you know, have Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Koschewski look into that, and, and I think it would be a good idea to have our state legislators come here, hopefully sometime before this budget is passed, and maybe we can present those questions to them in person, to ask why, I know there's a lot of arguments for and against weight limits, I've heard them, but it'd be good to have somebody from the state come and explain them. So, council would like to be next? Anyone? Mr. Shaner?
I can go, it's fine. I'll do the same thing, where I'll just make a, have a couple of questions and make a couple of comments, and then I'll talk about the roads. So first thing that I want to, I guess, ask really briefly, just because Ms. Varney is sitting right next to the microphone, is that as I'm looking through the budget, service improvements and notable changes, my question is, is that I see something about, with, under the fire administration, we're talking about increased training funding, and it looks like they requested about eight thousand dollars worth of new training, and the amount on the line item was zero in all those requests, but then I heard Mrs. Zarco say something, and I, maybe I missed it too, when Chief Martin was talking about the SWIFT water rescue training, or, I guess in this, it's the technician. So did I miss something here? Am I misunderstanding something?
Mrs. Varney?
Yep, I'm here.
I'm on page eighteen of this.
Yep, I got it. So the fire department already has a significant training budget. So, the fire department already has a significant training budget, and each year, they list all of the training that they want. This is the training dollars that were in excess of their already significant budget. The SWIFT water rescue training was something that we felt that they could fit into their already existing training budget.
Okay. The reason that I bring it up is because we have a lot of new firefighters and a lot of new police officers. And so, if, if the chiefs of both those departments think that it's necessary that we get these guys trained, so that, you know, maybe even if we increase their training budget for the next couple of years to get these guys where they need to be to be as efficient and, as possible, I think we, you know, it's something that maybe we need to look into. And I'll have these conversations, maybe with each chief, and see what they, how they feel about that. Another thing that I wanted to mention, first of all, thank you every, all the directors for your presentations. They were really good, very impressive, lots of great things going on in the city, and I couldn't be prouder to be sitting up here today. So, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention as far as something that I was happy to clarify with Ms. Varney, Mrs. Varney today regarding last year. If some of you, some of you will recall that I wanted to get a little bit, a few more dollars put into the Upton House, because I think it's a true gem in the city, especially with what's going to be taking, going to be taking place over there in Dodge Park. And I was happy to see that, at that time, I had thought that maybe we start out with $4,000 and see if we can extend that for the next five years to make it a total of $20,000. And without me even having to push the issue, the Upton House is getting their $4,000 again this year. So, those of you that are on the historical commission, I'd love to sit down with you again, as I did the first time, and see what your ideas are to, how to spend that money. So, very happy for that. So, now, I've prepared a little bit of, I guess, I've prepared myself, I should say, to discuss the issue of the roads here. First of all, if I could go through the, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, and Mr. Vanderpoel is, and I know I'm putting you on the spot here, I meant to mention it before the meeting started. Could you give me, can you refresh my memory on, and also refresh the public's memory, on how much money have we lost in revenue sharing since, I think it was 2007 was the date that we had been talking about in the recent past? So, that's why I thought you might have it at the top, on the top of your head. Regardless, if you don't, I know it's millions and millions.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Shannon, in terms of loss revenue sharing, we actually started declining around 2001, and when you index it to inflation, we've cumulatively lost about $45 to $50 million in state shared revenue losses now. So, you can imagine, as Councilman Zarco stated, you know, if we had that money now, we wouldn't be talking about roads. This discussion would not be necessary. But it is very true that the state has not lived up to its commitment for revenue sharing, and that includes all cities in the state. And it's a travesty, because fortunately, Sterling Heights is, I think we've done the right things to balance our budget and make the necessary cuts, and, and we are financially solvent and on solid financial footing. However, you can see that we still have these challenges, like roads. And there are many other cities that are on the financial brink of disaster. Fortunately, we're not one of them, but it's in large part because the state simply is not honoring its revenue sharing commitment to cities. They started cutting revenue sharing significantly in 2001. Statewide, cities have lost $8 billion in state shared revenue since 2001. $8 billion. So, that is in large part, part of the problem this evening.
So, as Mrs. Zarco pointed out earlier, the state is balancing their budget on our backs. So, I'm going to briefly go over, I guess, my position on, on why I think, why I think it's a good idea to go out for this one-time millage increase. So, lay out a hypothetical scenario here. Let's say I loan my friend $10,000, which is all of my savings. My friend doesn't pay me back, during which time, my home is falling into disrepair. I need a new roof, a furnace, a water heater. What am I supposed to do? Do I continue to let my house crumble, or do I bite the bullet and take out a loan and fix my house so that I can protect my family? And that's what we are here in Sterling Heights, a family of residents. Residents who have been failed by the state. As Mr. Vanderpoel pointed out, the state owes us approximately $45 to $50 million, and they are not going to pay, pay us that money back. We're not getting that revenue share, revenue sharing money back. So, what are we going to do? Should we continue to let our infrastructure fall into disrepair, causing hazardous conditions that end up all costing, costing us all in flat tires, broken axles, and God forbid, have the potential to even have more disastrous consequences from a serious accident? We're, we're out here on our own. This is a Sterling Heights problem, because the legislature and the governor have shown that they are not willing to take this problem seriously. A month ago, they approved $160 million extra, extra dollars in road repairs, of which Sterling Heights will see approximately $800,000. That's a drop in the bucket and won't come close to solving our problem. So, as a family, we're going to have to solve our problem on our own. I will be voting yes for this one-time tax increase, and when I say one-time, I give you my word that this will be a one-time tax increase. I hate that I've been forced into this situation, but the legislator has put us in the position that we're in today. So, I hate, I hate it, but I know it's the right thing to do, so as you can see that I'm in favor of it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Anyone else? Mrs. Schmidt?
Mayor Taylor, thank you. I would also like to start by thanking administration for your presentations tonight. You put a lot of time and effort and hours into those presentations, and all the work that our employees have done over the last year to contribute to those presentations. I appreciate that as well. Just a few things, through the chair, well, just a suggestion maybe for Ms. Frisca. The closer we get to the election, maybe not the May election, because we know usually people don't show up to those May elections, but for the primary, especially, maybe a public service announcement on these new machines. I was able to use the new machine in our last election, and there, it's, it was a little quirky for me, but it was the first time I was using it. There's a little lag time, and, and so, just, I, I think if we do a public service announcement that we can both have on the website and maybe run on SHTV, that would be helpful to the residents. Really excited about those machines, by the way. And to, through the chair to Chris, Chief Martin. Just real quickly, you had mentioned that, not very often, but occasionally, we have had the opportunity where we needed to reach out to Universal Ambulance or Mutual Aid. Could you, just approximate, Chief, how many times that has happened in the last, since we've started four or five months?
Since November 1st, we have used Mutual Aid or Universal Ambulance 58 times as of Monday of this week. Of those 58 times, I think about 30 of the times, Universal was able to help us. The other 28 would have been Mutual Aid from a neighboring fire department. And we have also provided Mutual Aid on 12 occasions since November 1st, doing a transport for another agency.
Okay. Great. I'm glad to hear that we still have a good working relationship with Universal. They were embedded in our community and still are embedded in our community, and I'm grateful that, that we have that relationship still established with them. The numbers were impressive, although I live by Station 4, so I'm not real surprised by the numbers coming out of Station 4. And that's it for you, Chief. Everyone else, it's exciting to see all the development going on in our city. Yes, all of that development is going to help all of us maintain a lower tax rate, because we are going to have more people contributing to that, that pot. So, a lot of, the majority of those developments, all of the developments are, are first, first-class, top-notch, and, and some of them, I'm more excited about than others. And all of them are going to be contributing factors to our community, so that's very exciting. And code enforcement, we know that is a thankless, tiring job, and we appreciate everything that, that those employees do for us. And I know all of us up here appreciate the response. You know, we get a lot of phone calls and, and emails regarding some code enforcement issues, and, and that department is really Johnny-on-the-spot to get things handled as expeditiously as possible. So, I appreciate that. Now, as far as the roads, Mrs. Zarco, you really said a lot. You didn't leave much for the rest of us, but that's okay. You said a lot of what I was, I was thinking myself. I think if, well, through the chair to Ms. Varney or Mr. Vanderpoel, I'm not sure, and I don't need an answer tonight, but just something that if you could research and get back to me on, instead of, you know, the perception, if we put a tax on the tax bill, it's never going away. That's all, I keep hearing this. Once it's there, it's never going away. It's never going away. Is it feasible to figure out how much each household would be assessed at that one mill and just send a bill? A one-time bill, instead of having it a tax? Just a thought. I have had residents say that they'd be more than willing to pay a one-time bill, but they don't want to pay a tax, and it's the same thing. But in the perception of taxes, it's not the same thing. So, just a thought, you know, throwing it out there, if you want to get back to council, you know, is, you know, on your feelings, or if you have thoughts on it right now, I'd appreciate it.
Got me to respond. My immediate thought is, you know, sending a bill is, there's a collectability issue. I mean, if we just send out 40,000 bills, you know, what are we going to do when people don't pay them? You know, by issuing a tax bill, obviously, there's ways we can enforce that. You know, one thought, I, I thought, I would need to research it further and discuss with the city attorney, would be the potential of a special assessment. Initial thoughts are, this probably would not qualify for a special assessment, but that would give us the enforceability. If you don't pay a special assessment, it goes on to your tax bill. So, my initial thought is, that probably would not work, but I would definitely, you know, like to look into it further and see if there are other possibilities.
Okay. I'd appreciate it. As far as Act 51, I think that is the stupidest act out there. That needs to be so revamped. It's so archaic and unfair in their distribution of money, because they, we are getting a pittance because Gaylord is getting just as much as us. They have less traffic than us. They have less roads. They have less every, and that's just, I'm just hypothetical. The way that money is distributed is not fair. It, it needs to be more saturated in the higher intense-use areas of the state of Michigan, and that is not taken into consideration. The significant, someone had mentioned the significant increase in our budget this year. That's due very largely in part to the voter-approved Parks and Rec Millage. That is part of that budget. So, that's why there's such a big difference in last year's budget and this year's budget. And I guess I went off the track from the roads, didn't I? Didn't mean to do that. My notes are a little scattered. I'm sorry. So, as far as the roads go, I believe this council would be derelict in duty because of the safety concerns of our roads to not do something if we're able to do it. And we are able to do it. I only commit to this for one year, period. If we need, I, I would be in favor of putting a sunset clause, because that's it for me, one time for this, one mill for the roads and done. But I think it is an emergency, and we need to do something. We need to do it now. The, the suggestion about maintaining what we repair or what we replace, I think that's really important. We need to look into that as part of our bid, bid specs, that, that we need to make sure that what we're buying is going to last. When I buy a car, I buy a car, and my husband changes the oil every two, or two times a year, because we want it to last. You need to maintain it so that it lasts as long as, as it possibly can. So, I am in favor of this mill. Do I like it? No. But as was said, people are spending way more money than this, getting their cars repaired. And people dodging potholes and going, weaving around, looking like impaired drivers just to avoid potholes, is a very dangerous situation. So, I think we are up against the wall, and we need to fight Lansing for our money. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Sure, I'll go ahead, I guess. I want to thank the city administration for an excellent budget workshop. I think they did an excellent job with the proposals. It really is eye-opening. You can read on the page, when you get a nice presentation, helps you kind of think about things in new ways. A lot of what my colleagues said, I'm going to echo here, as I have some notes. You know, this is one of the hardest votes I think I'm going to take so far since I got on the council. I don't want to raise taxes. I don't. And I really thought about maybe voting no. I have to think about it, you know? But when I see the status of Mound Road, when I see the status of our, our major roadways, when I see the chunks of concrete that I'm hitting, now I have a Chrysler, you know, so it's low, low car, I hit them, I have to think that we can do something better here. And, you know, the state is neglect in their, their work on the roads. This is not something we can fix as a council. We only can do our best effort, because like my colleagues have said, Act 51 really ties our hands. It prioritizes new road construction over existing infrastructure and does not take into account how roads are used and how often they're used. So, for every new subdivision being built in northern Macomb County, or up in the UP or wherever, they're getting more of our road money. We're donors. We're giving it to them, and we're not getting it back. If you drive Shaner from 15 to 16 mile, you know what not getting it back really looks like. It's terrible. And I, I hate driving it every day. You know, I talked to residents, I kind of did a little poll, just seeing people I've run into, and I asked them, "What do you think about a one-mill tax for one year?" And I'm committing to that one year. And almost all of them said yes. Now, one resident said, "You know what? The state owes us our money. We should just shut down Mound Road. It's a public safety hazard and make the state blink." Now, I, I thought about that. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We do $8 billion in economic impact through Mound Road and Sterling Heights every year. That'd be like cutting off our neck to spite the state. That is an economic corridor for our city. It's essential. It helps, it helps us keep the taxes low. It helps us have businesses and, you know, jobs in the city. I can't see closing it down, but we need to fix it. So, I'm going to do something I don't want to do. I think I'm going to vote for this one-mill for one year. It's not going to come back around again, because I'm not going to vote for it next year if it does. But it's just, it's something that we have to talk to our legislators about. Now, I got into some Facebook discussions, some other discussions today about this. People say, you know, "Why, you know, state raised our taxes." They did, but they haven't given us the money yet. State gave us $800,000 more this year for roads, special. That's not going to fix one roadway. And if you drive this city, you know we need to fix our roadways. So, I have to hold my nose here, but we have to talk to our legislators. You have to call them. You have to be annoying, show up at their office, send them letters, because they have to know how bad it is here in Macomb County. Because when they're driving around Lansing, they're not driving on Shaner, and we see it here. You know, just look at my notes here. You know, it's, it's hard when I have to tell someone that I, the gentleman who complained about Mound Road, he was, I coached his son in Little League baseball, so I, you know, consider him to be a friend. We don't always see eye-to-eye politically, but we're friends. And I tell him that I have to charge him more next year for the roads, that we're going to vote as a city to do this. But, you know, if we don't, I feel like we're being negligent. You know, we, we were elected to make the hard choices, not the easy choices, the hard choices. The easy choice up here for all my colleagues is just to say no. Pass the bucket. Pass it to someone else. The hard choice is to try to fix the problem, even as best as we can up here right now. So, I'm going to tend to vote yes on the, on the roads proposal, even though I don't want to, because I think we have to show as a city that we're doing everything we can, and we need your help to tell our legislators in Lansing to do everything they can to fix our roads here in Macomb. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke and Mrs. Koschewski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank administration, great presentations tonight, good information. You're heading in the right direction. I'm going to repeat some of what my colleagues have said in regard to the clerk's office. The passports that you're going to implement, I think that is a great idea. I need a passport. So, I'll be seeing you when that's all. So, I'll be seeing you when that's all set up. The voting machines, I think that's a great idea to do a little blurb on Channel 5 and 10 and let the people learn how to use the machine because that also is a great improvement. In regard to our fire department, I'm sorry for putting the dent in. Nineteen new firefighters. I hope that you're going to have enough ability to train those the way you want them trained. If not, give us a call and we'll see what we can do about that. I think the green light control for the vehicles, that is a tremendous idea that's going to save quite a few mishaps, shall we say. In regard to city development, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, will that include the repair of this step out here at City Hall?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Councilman Kosky, it certainly will. We will have to reconstruct that entire retaining wall. I know you've expressed concern about it, but it will be repaired with the maintenance funding budgeted.
Great. Thank you. Another question for you in regard to the roads, in regard to the truck weight, traffic, so on. I'm sure that you're going to work on that to get that implemented again. In regard to maintenance, don't we have a procedure, or I should say, maintenance and construction, don't we have a procedure where there are inspectors when the roads are being laid? I don't know if I'm using the proper words, but the mixture that they use must meet certain standards. Inspectors watch as this process is being done. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Councilman Kosky, I'd be happy to because there is this, I believe, misperception that there's a quality control problem with the roads. And the reality is, we have a very robust quality control program. As Mr. Juddnick mentioned earlier, we do take core samples on all the roads. We make sure, we send it to an independent lab. We make sure that it meets all of our specifications. And before we even get to construction, our bid documents are very detailed. They're consistent with MDOT's quality control standards and other best practices used on road construction, not only in Michigan, but throughout the country. These are common standards used throughout the country. There was an individual who spoke earlier who said Ohio does it right and Pennsylvania does it right, and they have different standards. We have the exact same standards. We don't have different standards. The problem is Ohio allocates about $1 billion more a year to their roads than we do. So, what it means is we have to spread the butter too thin. When we should be reconstructing roads in southeastern Michigan, we're asphalting them. We're repairing them to last 10 years with an asphalt overlay compared to 35 years with a complete concrete reconstruction. So, that's a dilemma for Michigan. But we do have joint sealing programs that we implement every year as well to preserve the pavement. And we're always looking at new technologies too. Like anything, road technology advances, just like home construction, auto assemblies and so on. Roads last longer now when done correctly, when there's adequate funding to do them correctly. But beyond that, I'm sure the city engineer would be happy to go through the litany of quality control measures that we have in place for roads. And just one more example that I think we can all relate to, the Van Dyke project. There were 300 more drainage structures put in with the Van Dyke reconstruction than with the initial Van Dyke construction almost 30 years ago. So, that's an example of how drainage is being improved on roadways to make them last longer. And we do the exact same thing with our local roads now. When we build local roads or improve them, we put sophisticated drainage structure and apparatus under them now to drain them properly. 20, 30 years ago, that wasn't a best practice, but it is today. So, it's much different today than it was years ago.
One last question, Mr. Vanderpool. With this one mil, one year, you promised us that that's all it would be, one year. What will the status of our roads be after this one-year completion?
Councilman Kosky, another good question. We have a very sophisticated PESER rating system that's used statewide. Actually, was developed by MDOT. And many cities across the state have adopted that very sophisticated PESER study. The city engineer would have to tell you what our PESER rating would be after we get through with the next two construction seasons. But just anecdotally speaking, the major county roads in our city right now that are a huge problem, Shaner, Mound, North Van Dyke, 14 Mile Road, Utica Road, and we hope to have a plan very shortly on 18 Mile Road. Those roads will all be done in the next two construction seasons. So, I think everyone can appreciate the current condition of those in the next two construction seasons. Those are all improved, including Mound Road from 14 and 1/2 up to 18 Mile, the worst road in our city, will be done this summer. So, just on those major county roads alone, not to mention Dodge Park and all the other city road projects that we have planned, 15 Mile Road, 19 Mile Road, and the litany of other roads planned for this summer, and not to mention the $4 million we have programmed for neighborhood road improvements, even above and beyond the Safe Streets revenue that's generated. Our road conditions will improve vastly this year alone and after next construction season as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky.
Mayor Taylor.
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Thank you. Okay, I want to, I will try to be brief. You've heard of from everybody else except for our mayor, so I'm going to do just what I can to say a few words. Thank you, administration. Fantastic job on your budgets. Yes, it is important for us to hear it because even though we see it on paper, there may be questions that come up or ideas that we have when you're making your presentation. So, it's important to have that twofold approach. Now, and again, and Chief Martin, a lot of residents did not know that we did not have the green light mandate or throughway when a firefighter or a police officer is coming through. So, that's important to know that we still have to do that. People think that that's there and that they can just drive through if it's a green light and not pay attention sometimes for sirens and other things going on. So, that is very important for our safety. Now for roads. Yes, Mr. Juddnick, I see you're leaving, but I know you can hear me and I do agree with you. We do need to explore some other options in addition to trying to carry roads only on the back of the residence for residents too. I don't want to spend another dime. I've got kids in college and grandbabies and all sorts. Who wants to spend another dime on fixing something that you hope can get fixed and stay fixed? But we need to, hopefully the city, we can get a little more skin in the game. Maybe we can adjust their budget a little bit more, put more into the roads. I do believe that we need to remember, however, we cannot misappropriate funds from the state, the voter millages that we've had for Safe Streets, which we're obviously using for streets, but residential streets only, and the Parks and Recs. Yes, we can all have different opinions on the artwork, what's appropriate signage, what park needs more of whatever, but at the end of the day, it still has to be parks. It can't go to the roads. And we, you know, I'd love to be able to do, in a way, be able to do that, but it's misappropriation and that's what some of the issues with our state have right now because they've taken funds away from areas that should not have gone, should have gone to one area and we're not getting what we need. So, we're going to be honest and transparent about where that money is coming from and going to. I really do agree also with holding contractors accountable. My brother's a civil engineer. He's worked for MDOT for years. Now, he works for a private company. Yes, there are different grades and qualities of materials that we can use. We do have standards, but we can mandate some of the higher qualities. And also, we need to make sure that we have some type of a clause that says, okay, if you're going to put this road in, you're also going to be in charge of maintaining it. Or we're going to find some way, I don't know what we can do with that with our bidding process, but that's a suggestion from me. And then, most of us have said this, but I want to reiterate, yes, it's a state issue. We're working on state funding that we're not getting and it's certainly, we're paying a lot of money into state taxes and funds going to where we don't always want them to go. But at the end of the day, as Mrs. Yarco said, we've got to take care of ourselves. We are, we're all we have and all government is local government. We all have to make it happen. I don't want to raise another tax. I'm still trying to figure a way where we don't have to in my mind, but I think the end of the day, we're cost-sharing with the county to do these county roads because they can't even get the funds to do it. And we have to drive on them. So, it's either you keep passing the buck, passing the buck, saying it's not my job, not my job, not my funds, or we do something. And this is our something. We have to mandate the roads get done the way they need to be. I'm very much in favor of weight limit, increasing the weight limits. I remember back when Governor Engler, wasn't Governor, but during his reign, he, it was, that's when it was voted on that we could do the double trucks. We can have all sorts of different weights, higher weights, and the roads are a sign of that unfortunate occurrence. So, again, at the end of the day, I really don't want to vote for this either, but I think I'm going to have to. It's a rough decision. Nobody wants to do it, but one-time deal better be written in because I won't vote for it again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. I too will thank all of the administrators, directors who participated in the meeting tonight and appreciate your presentations. They were very thoughtful and informative and it's exciting to see a lot of the new services, like the passport services, the improvements to technology that the fire department's going to be using and to get an update on where transport stands in addition to everything else, including code enforcement and of course, the roads. I do want to just address a couple of the resident concerns regarding the roads and I'll try not to be redundant because a lot of the council members already have. One that has been addressed, but I want to just reiterate is, because I've heard it too, is why don't we transfer money that is being earmarked for Parks and Recreation right now and use that instead for the roadways? And as it's been stated multiple times, that is a voter-approved initiative that cannot be legally diverted to any other purpose. So, we can't put those funds on hold. We can't stop what we're doing over at Dodge Park, nor frankly, we want to. I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the community. It was approved by the voters and so it's going to, that's going to go forward. One resident asked, why couldn't, Mr. Vanderpool stated that businesses are going to be paying about 30% of this one-mil increase where to go forward. That is because businesses pay property taxes just like residents do. If you have a building in Sterling Heights, if it's commercial or industrial, you're assessed just like your house would be. And so, businesses pay property taxes too. This is a property tax increase and 30% of the property taxes are paid by businesses. A resident asked, well, why don't, why can't we make them pay 50? Because they own 30% of the taxable value. So, there's just no legal way to do that. You can't, the city couldn't assess differently based on what classification of your property, what classification your property is. There was a lot of mention about heavy trucks, weight limits, Public Act 51. Why is the money from the tax from the recently enacted increases to the gas tax and the registration fees, where is that money going? Why isn't that enough? These are all state issues and I'm not here to pass the buck. I'm here to tell you, these are state issues and I have been lobbying our state legislators and I've been making it very clear to them that we are not getting a fair shake. We have been involved, the city administration has been, in bending their ear any chance we get to let them know that we need changes to Public Act 51, which unfairly divides money up amongst rural and suburban and urban communities, and we just don't get a fair shake out of it for a number of reasons. It's a law that was passed in 1951 when you didn't have M-59 four lanes and Telegraph Road four lanes and Woodward four lanes. You had more, you know, the roads here in the suburban areas of Macomb, Oakland and Wayne Counties were probably more similar to the rural outstate counties. And so, we are not being treated fairly and it blows my mind that Republicans and Democrats from Wayne, Oakland and Macomb County can't get together on this issue and do what's right by us. We keep getting, for lack of a better word, screwed by the out counties here. When it comes to fireworks, the reasons we have bad fireworks legislation is because the rural counties want fireworks. So, we're just going to have to live with it here. That's essentially what the chairman of that committee told me. Rural counties like fireworks, so Wayne, Oakland and Macomb, you're just going to have to live with it. I'm calling on all of our state legislators, Macomb, Oakland, Wayne County, Kent County, Ottawa County, out on the west side of the state. These are where the more populated counties are, Livingston County, Washtenaw County. You guys need to get together, Republican and Democrat, and amend Public Act 51. You know, I'm not even saying raise the gas taxes, which needs to be done frankly, but at least amend that statute that unfairly benefits the rural counties in northern Michigan at the expense of more populated and more trafficked counties here in southeastern Michigan. I don't understand why we're not, why they're not able to do that, but it really does blow my mind. And that goes, look, I'm not an expert on weight limits and trucks and that sort of thing and I hear a lot of people talk about it. I've heard both sides of the issue and I don't know what the correct answer is. I hear people say, if you reduce the weight limits, then you're just going to have more trucks out on the road doing more damage. I don't know if that's true or not. I really don't. I don't take an opinion on it, but I do see that we are different than many other states in the country. We may be, we maybe have the highest weight limits. I know that it's per axle here in Michigan. Maybe that's different than other states, but that's something that the state needs to address and it needs to be addressed immediately. Mr. Jefferson, you asked about the Safe Streets Millage. That's, that would be up for renewal in 2019, next year. So, that's, that is slated to sunset in 2019 and I anticipate it will be on the ballot in 2019. So, that's the replacement. Mr. Juddnick, you asked a question that's been repeated to me a lot of, by a lot of residents. Why do we need to increase the taxes? Why don't we just take from the $230 million that's being spent already and find a way to come up with the money that way? And I'm not here to say it's impossible because it's not. Certainly, it's possible, but it's not as easy as it originally sounds. Of the $231 million budget, we've got $105 million in our general fund and the other $125 million or so comes from other funds. So, I'm just going to try to briefly go through this. The biggest source of that other $125 million is the water and sewer fund. So, we can't just, that $52 million, 52.9 million in the water and sewer fund is money that the city is receiving through water and sewer fees. It's also going to pay for maintaining our water and sewer and infrastructure. So, as much as I'd like to cut the water bills in half, if we cut the water bills in half, we'd only be receiving $26 million, but we can't really do that. And we can't take money that we're using for water and sewer and divert it to the roads. That would be negligent as well because we need to maintain that infrastructure. 5.4 million is for debt service, voted tax general obligation, road bond debt, limited tax general obligation. That money cannot be diverted and used. We can't reduce that spending or divert it to other, to the roads. We have special revenue funds, 15 million for major roads, 6.6 million for local roads. Obviously, we're not going to cut that because we're talking about using money for the roads. Parks and Recreation, $26.8 million. That's voter-approved and as I said, it can't be diverted anywhere else. Public Safety Forfeiture, $462,000. We can't use public forfeiture money for the roads. That has to be, that has to be used for very specific purposes. CDBG money of about $1 million. Again, very specific. The federal government tells us what we can use that for. Local Development Finance Authority, this is a TIF financing. We have to use that in the TIF district. We've got capital project funds and this money, some of this money could be diverted, but we're talking about doing building improvements for our DPW buildings. We're talking about improving our information technology, things that we've talked about like the fire department, improving technology to make residents safer, to get our fire trucks where they need to be quicker, to save lives. Machinery and equipment, these are like trucks that are out plowing snow. You know, when we start getting complaints that why aren't the trucks out plowing snow, we say, well, because we cut some of that. say, well, because we cut some of that money so that we could pay for the roads instead. So we'll get complaints, well, we need those trucks out there to clear snow. I can't get to work if you're not out there clearing the snow. Then construction, road construction, 4.75 million dollars from that. So again, you're not, you're not gonna reduce road bond construction. So what does that leave? That leaves the general fund. And the general fund is by and large, people. The people that work at City Hall. When you, like Mr. Visankos said, we've got an enormous amount of construction going on in the city. It's keeping them very busy. We could, we can't reduce their, we can't reduce their salaries, because they're, they have unions, that they have negotiated benefits and salaries, and they're protected by union contracts. So you can't just unilaterally reduce their salaries, so you could lay 'em off. You lay off a couple of building officials. And then the developers, and the people who are trying to build up our community, increase our tax base, will start complaining, because they can't get a permit. They can't build in Sterling Heights, because building people are too, too busy. We can lay off firefighters. We can lay off cops. Really, what it comes down to, when you wanna save money in the city of Sterling Heights, that's where you gotta go. You gotta lay off cops, and you gotta lay off firefighters. That is really the only place in the budget where you're gonna come up with $4.2 million to pay for taxes, to pay for roads. So, seeing the emergency condition that the roads are in, I, from where I sit, we have one of two options. We can either increase the taxes by one mil, one time, in order to address emergency conditions on these roadways. 15 Mile, 16 Mile, 17 Mile, 19 Mile, Utica Road, and Shana Road. If you drive on any of those roads, you'll know. They can't go through another winter like we had this year. We would be derelict in our duty. We would be breaching our fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of Sterling Heights, to let these roads crumble in this condition, and put motorists back out on those roads next year. So for $92 on average, as you said, Mr. Juddnick, it's a good deal, and then when you, when you factor in that your $92 is gonna turn into $270 in matches from state, county, federal sources, the taxpayers are getting a tremendous deal for this money. I'm not sitting here saying, you ought to thank us for raising your taxes. You don't. It's hard, and I know it is. And especially when a lot of the community wanted those, that park improvement, and a lot of it didn't. And I understand that. But this is something I feel we have a tremendous obligation to do. As everyone up here said, it's not easy for any of us, but we have an obligation to do it. And I appreciate that for a lot of people, when you see things going on in the city, like the seedling statute across the street from us, it's easy to look at that and say, what in the hell is the city of Sterling Heights doing? And I hear you loud and clear. I really do. But when you look at our $231 million budget, and you look at all of the spending that we're doing, and all of the work that we're doing, improving the facilities, investing in infrastructure, investing in technology, investing in better innovations to make our, our fire department, and our police department, and all of our departments better, to better serve the residents, and you look at everything that we do, those public art, the public art program and the signs, I understand the frustration people have with them, but even if we eliminated all of those sorts of items, and there really isn't a lot of that, you're not gonna get anywhere. We need something like 20 to 25 million to fix one mile of mound road. You eliminate the sculpture, and you eliminate the signs, that gets you about 150 feet on mound road, not even. I think it was 66 feet. So I think we have an obligation to not just fix our roads, but to make sure that we have a city that's desirable, that's unique, that's distinctive. And some of these things, when they all come together, I think are gonna make Sterling Heights an even greater city than it already is. And I don't wanna neglect every other thing that we can do in the city, just because we have an emergency with the roads. So, this is the best way to address it, in my opinion. It's tough. It's hard for me, too. I would rather spend that money on anything else, other than taxes, but it's, it's something I think that we absolutely have to do. So I'm gonna leave my comments at that tonight. I thank everybody for your participation. I appreciate the feedback. I know the council members and I have been getting a lot of feedback over the last 24 hours, and we appreciate your continued feedback as we continue to go through this budget, because there are a lot of other items that need to be addressed, and they will be in the next two weeks and over the next month. So, with that, council, we do have a motion on the floor. The motion is to adopt, or I'm sorry, to introduce the appropriations ordinance as amended, or not amended, but with the suggestion to amend it. With no further discussion on that motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries, and we will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, which is, tonight's agenda was everything going on in the city, so that's kinda tough. But Mr. Juddnick, why don't you come up and lead us off?
Yeah, thank Mayor, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, there's two sides to every coin here, so, all right. So the way you rattled off that $231 million budget, so you can't find a nickel, I got a suggestion. We have a 13, the only thing, the one thing the fire chief said was that he liked the way that the new fire ladder truck was cool. So we got a 13-year-old ladder truck that we're using right now. We've got a 20-year-old ladder truck that's fully operational that we're keeping until we get this new one, and then we're gonna put the 30, 13-year-old in. Why don't we just wait one year and not buy that fire truck this year? We don't need it this year. We got two of them. What, what is that gonna be? What is that, $700,000, or is it a million bucks? It's probably a million, 1.2 million or something like that. Why don't you guys mothball that for one year? It's an idea. The other thing, Mrs. Zarco, you know, you've been going on and on and on about the governor and about the state. Let me tell you something. You were on the council the eight years Jennifer Granholm was governor. You knew 10, all those years, 10 years in a row, you too, Mrs. Schmidt, every single year, revenue sharing was going down. What did you do about it? What did you do about it, Mrs. Kowski? What'd you do about it, Mr. Vanderpoel? You guys didn't do anything. You should've raised our taxes. You mean, this road thing just didn't pop up. You had 15 years to start raising our taxes. You could've raised it a half a million here, half a mil there, half a mil here, half a mil there. You never did it. Now, all of a sudden, here you are, you want, you know, you want the whole one mil. So, don't just blame it on everything, on this governor and all his policies. We lost all of our money under the eight years Jennifer Granholm. The other thing, let's talk about money. Where's our, where's all of our money at? Mrs. Zarco, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Schmidt, in 20 minutes, you guys voted down, but we, we lost $23.4 million in tax revenue in 20 minutes. You gave Fiat Chrysler a 10-year tax abatement, you gave Ford a tax year, tax abatement, 10-year tax abatement, and you gave this company at 17 Mile Road that's got this huge contract with Chrysler. This company was from Toronto, Canada. I remember Mr. Taylor asking the petitioner, well, if we don't give you this, oh, by the way, residents watching at home. So, even this new one mil, guess what? They only have to pay half of it, because they gave them a 10-year, 50% tax abatement, so they don't have to pay the whole thing. But this company on 17 Mile Road is from Toronto, Canada. I remember Mr. Taylor asking, well, if we don't give you this tax abatement, are you gonna still build in Sterling Heights? Well, you know, we could build our plant in Toronto and, and truck our plastic eight hours, one way to Sterling Heights, Michigan, then drive an empty truck back. No business owner's gonna do that. They, that, they were gonna put that 200 square foot, 200,000 square foot building up there on 17 Mile Road, whether you gave it to them or not. So, so residents and council, listen, just that, in 21 minutes, 23.4 million. That's 2.34 million a year for the next 10 years that we lost in revenue. So. And then another thing is, Mr. Bonner still working for us? When Mr. Bohorski retired and went into, into the city, I remember you, Mr. Vanderpoel, saying that he was gonna be working with community development. This, Mr. Visankos did a fantastic job today on community development. And if you remember, we had a guy, Luke Bonner, that worked for us, and back when recession hit, he didn't wanna take his 10% pay cut. So he quit and left the city, went over to Ann Arbor, went to work. And then when he lost his job there, he comes grevelling back here for a job, and you guys hired him as a consultant. 150,000 a year, plus expenses, for three days' worth of work. So you've got, Mr. Bohorski's doing it, you got Luke, oh, I never see Luke Bonner. So what are we getting for 180 grand a year? Why don't you get rid of him? The last thing was, residents might not know this, we pay $100,000 a year to, to Warren, Michigan, give them 100 grand a year, so we can get a subsidy using their pool. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Russo?
I kinda have to reiterate what Joe was saying about the tax abatements, because we've given up a ton of money. And Troy doesn't do it, and their roads are twice as good as ours. And then, now, what's, what's happening is the little ice cream shops gotta pay for it, the, the little party stores gotta pay for it. You know, I, like I said, you guys keep putting the cart before the horse here. It's not fair. It really isn't fair for the, for the, for the citizens of Sterling Heights. It, this is getting worse and worse and worse. And I said this a long time ago, we have the lowest tax rate in the state, and I don't know if we're trying to catch up with everybody else, or what. But, like he was saying about changing the laws, and changing somebody, some of these guys in Lansing to change the laws to where you can get some more money, that's basically what you guys have a little bit of control on. It's your squeaky wheel that can go down there and try to, try to squeak some more money out of them, or change some legislature, or do whatever you have to do. That's why the, the community votes for you guys, because we have confidence in you. We have confidence in Mr. Vanderpoel to be able to do this kinda stuff. Okay? And, and, you know, Mr. Taylor, you're a lawyer, you should be, you're a smart kid, you know, you're, you can do this stuff. And I don't mean that in a bad way, that you're a kid, but, you know, you're a young man, you, you got the whole world in front of you, and, and you should be doing this kinda stuff. Change the legislature. Don't stand here and tell us that they should do it. See what you can do about it. That's why we vote you in. That's why you've been here for as long as you have, because people have confidence in you. It's evident. With the last election, you got in, and it was overwhelming. So, change things around you. That's what the community's trying to tell you. See, all the old people, us old guys, we're all out here complaining about it. It's not because we don't have the money to do it. It's that we wanna see change for these young people. I wanna have my kids enjoy a life, maybe in Sterling Heights. Yeah, I like the park and what you guys are doing, but sometimes you'd have to be careful where you're spending the money. These roads have been messed up for a long time. Appro, you should've appropriated a little bit of, of, you know, something to, to kinda protect yourself in case we needed some of that money to use it for somewhere else. I don't think anybody in Sterling Heights that voted on that millage would, would not vote for taking some of that money right now, rather than have their taxes changed. And I, and I'm sure of it. And I'm not so sure that you can't do that anyway. So, I mean, you guys are saying that you can't do that, and I didn't wanna make light of these guys, of their presentation. My whole thing before, what I said was, was, they do a fabulous job, and it's, it's all the time. And to make them spin their wheels here to tell us all that, you guys know it all. Yeah, the public might not know it all, but they need to get involved in the city, and when they do, they'll see what, what they have to offer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Russo. Mr. Smith?
Well, somebody mentioned special election on May 8th. That's, that's another 1.4 mils that they wanna tack on your tax bill for Macomb County Community College down in Warren. I don't, I don't really need a, a new park development, and I don't need this, this mil, so, but if that one passes, it's gonna be 2.4 mils added to your tax bill this year. You know, a mil here, a mil there, and pretty soon, it's, it's real money. So, I guess, those of you that are so much in favor of your local school systems, remember, every one of these millages that pass makes it that much harder for Warren, Con, or Utica Community to pass a mil, 'cause, 'cause it all goes on the tax bill. At some point, the voters will say no. Sunday morning, I was scrolling through television, and I was pretty surprised. I saw an hour and five-minute seminar put on by some narcotics pushers. There's, there's a room full of dope pushers that wanted to put Sterling Heights in the marijuana business. Everybody in there, they says, well, it was, it was, it was like passing the parks bill. It was an informal seminar, but it was 99.5%, almost in a frenzy, almost frothing at the mouth, to get marijuana shops in Sterling Heights as soon as possible. And they're using this dope addict and pusher jargon, where they referred to people that got a, a medical marijuana card as victims and patients, and they referred to dope pushers as caregivers. Well, they put this through in Colorado. You know, they've got a, a 12-step program to get out of drug addiction, but it's only a three-step program to get into drug addiction. Step one is medical marijuana with their certificate. Step two is medical marijuana, just on your word. And step three is like Colorado, they got more drug shops than there are Subways and McDonald's. But the thing that astounded me the worst was the major drug pusher, the biggest drug dealer in the place, was Mark Kabutsky. Mark Kabutsky and his assistant, Don Denault, two Ransillo-O'Reilly lawyers on contract to Sterling Heights, pushing drugs, dealing drugs to the people. They said, they said, jeez, it's been 143 days, we could've legalized marijuana, and we haven't got it yet. We gotta get our fix. We gotta get those marijuana shops, 'cause drug addicts in Sterling Heights have to drive all the way down to 8 Mile to get their fix. That's, that's not, not good enough. We gotta have, we gotta have weed in Sterling Heights. And that was paid for by our city through that, that dope pusher right there. If you don't believe it, just turn on Sterling Heights TV. Gotta, gotta have that, gotta have that weed. You know, this, this tax increase isn't gonna set well. And you know I'm already against you, but there's gonna be a lot of other people that have kids in school and kids involved with churches, that it really isn't gonna go good with the community if we start going into these many, many empty storefronts, and every one of them has a big green weed in front of it, and just get, get your fix here. 'Cause they've done that in other states. They had a map on, they showed states color-coded by colors, and there's a lot of them that have said no to drugs. And Sterling Heights needs to be one that says the same way. I say, that gay power thing didn't go so good, and I think this won't either. I said, it's sort of a lose-lose deal. Either you vote no and take an issue away from her, or you put it into weed shops and give us another good way to get rid of you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Jefferson, another tough act for you to follow.
I know, if we just legalize that weed, we could tax, put that on the tax and pay for the roads. Ha ha! But I just want everybody to, to pay attention to what happened here tonight. It was some things said. The mayor said we're gonna have to, with the sunset clause, that means we're gonna have to, they're gonna put that tax off on, on you people and say, you people did it. So pay attention to that. Mr. Vanderpoel, I had a question for you. What's the procedure for getting owners to pay for potholes that's in their parking lots? Because some of these parking lots is just tore up, just like the streets. You can do some serious damage. I, I don't, I don't know what the procedure is for that. Could you explain that to us? And then, like I said, I, I hope you people pay attention, because I, I'm real serious here. The, Macomb County Road is in trouble. They've let us down. We're gonna have at least 3,000 more people soon as that Amazon plant gets put in up there on 23 Mile, going up and down these roads. I don't know, sometimes during, you go up and down Romeo Plain, it, it's pretty tight over there, because they haven't expanded. Executive Hackel, he's teed off by the roads not being fixed, but he gotta be teed off, because he gonna have to find some money, some way to expand these roads. We need to find some way to maintain the ones that we, we're doing. I, I really hope you guys paid attention tonight. The people of the city paid attention, because Mr. Vanderpoel was saying, only part of these roads was being fixed. That means, we gonna have another winter where the other half may be getting damaged. That's gonna have to be fixed some way, somehow, some way that's got, that's gonna have to be maintained. And nobody And nobody up here said, hey, what's, how much is it going to cost us to maintain this? It's a one-time down payment, but it's going to be an ongoing maintaining process, and nobody raised those questions. I don't know why you guys sit up there and just sit up there and not say nothing. Don't you guys think about that? This stuff has got to be maintained. It's got to be upheld. But you guys just sit there and don't say nothing? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on communications from citizens? Sir, come on up.
Good evening. Brian Lee, Sterling Heights. I missed all the fun and games with everything that's went on, probably. Just one question. If we pay for this tax for the road, is it going to stay strictly in Sterling Heights or is it going out? Because last year, I had company from Europe, and I paid approximately eighty dollars more for gas than I did the year before with that increase. And all the extra stuff that went on through our wonderful government. But that's my main question. If it's staying in Sterling Heights, I feel sure I'd agree with it. But if it's going to the city, it's going to the state, no way whatsoever. That's just the one question, that's all. The other question, Mr. Vanderpool, a couple of years, a year and a half ago, I see, about the, why we were paying for Hamtramck's water bill. Mrs. Kosky, when we talked with her, she explained that it's come through the board down there when they made the one big water board. That's why we've got the increase, you know. I still don't think that's right. And I think you had every right whatsoever to fight for to get something done, you know, we shouldn't be paying the large amount for the sewer when we are paying for them. You know, I don't think that's right whatsoever. Anyway, yous all do a good job as far as I'm concerned, and I told you one time before, I'll take you to my guy who makes steel vests for the knives going in your back.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yep, Mr. McGregor. To be clear, this would not be sent to Lansing. The money from that tax would stay one-hundred percent in Sterling Heights.
Just for the record, I'm not old. I'm twenty-one. Anyway, anyways, as far as most of you have all referred to biting the bullet with the new tax, are we thinking about imposing a smaller tax for the future, something where we could have an emergency road fund? Because the way this state is moving, we're probably not going to have funds in the future to redo this, and we'd rather not have to pay like the average of ninety-two dollars the next time this comes around as opposed to maybe we could have a separate tax that continues, like point-two mils or something like that after this one year. I don't know if that's something we're looking into or something we could try. But yeah, that's all. Other than that, yeah, I really appreciate this, and I completely agree. For the price of Netflix, I can have my North Van Dyke fixed. That'd be nice.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anybody else? If not, I'll close that portion, and let me check, Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Mayor, just quickly, I can respond to a couple of things. There is some misinformation. Mr. Jutnik indicated that some of the businesses that are scheduled to expand and receive a tax abatement on their new investment would not have to pay the one mil or pay a reduction of that. That's not true. Those businesses would have to pay the one mil on their existing tax base. And the twenty-four million he referenced in lost revenue, actually, there's twenty-four million in increased revenue that would be generated from those new investments because the abatement on the new investment is fifty percent. So that means we're getting fifty percent more in new revenue. That model's worked very well for Sterling Heights. It's one of the reasons why we have a very low tax rate for residents, because we have a very strong and robust manufacturing tax base. Just by way of example, FCA, who's received a number of tax abatements on new investments, is our largest taxpayer in the city of Sterling Heights. Ford Motor Company is our second-largest taxpayer. So you can see that these massive companies that spend millions of dollars in tax revenue to the city continue to invest in our city because of our pro-business practices. There was also a comment that we need to be doing more to protect state shared revenue. Mr. Russo had indicated that we weren't doing anything. That's completely not true. I'd love to spend some time and share with you all that we have been doing and continue to do. But just by way of example, there is an entity that's been formed by a consortium of communities, including Sterling Heights, that has sued the state over state shared revenue reductions. That litigation has been ongoing for a couple of years now with some positive momentum. We hope that that will prove to be beneficial here in the next couple of years and will result in restoration of some of our lost state shared revenue and at least preserving what we get into the future. So I'd be happy to talk with Mr. Russo about that more at his leisure. Also, there was some mention about the medical marijuana facility licensing. As many may know, the state recently approved legislation to authorize cities to have medical marijuana facilities located in a community. The forum that we had was conducted to provide information to the community so that they understood the state legislation. Communities have three options. They can either opt in and allow the medical marijuana facilities in their communities, such as dispensaries. They can opt out, or they can do nothing. At this point in time, the Sterling Heights City Council has chose to take sort of a wait-and-see approach and see how things go with this licensing legislation in other communities. And the forum we held was nothing more than that, is purely an informational, educational forum. Anyone can watch it on our cable channel. Mr. Kazubski or anyone else did not advocate for the legislation whatsoever. And I believe, Mayor, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kazubski. Any items tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Council, any reports? Mrs. Zarco?
Yes. Well, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. The one-hundred thousand dollars that we referenced that we pay Warren so that our residents could use the facility at a resident rate, does that come out of the recreating recreation fund?
Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, yes, you're correct. It does come out of the recreating recreation fund. Just as a reminder, we did not include an aquatics element in the recreating recreation, which would have added six to eight million dollars to the project and millions in annual operational costs. Instead, we thought it's more effective to develop this agreement with the city of Warren where our residents can use their facility at Warren rates, saving our taxpayers millions of dollars and also generating some needed revenue for the city of Warren as a win-win situation. We have hundreds of people that are using the facility because of that deal. It is being paid through Parks or Recreating Recreation.
Okay, thank you. Another thing is, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Mr. Bonner did not lose his job. He left the Spark, I believe it was, to start his own business, so it wasn't a matter of him losing his job and looking for another place to land. He had a plan. And we've complained about revenue sharing for as long as I've been here, and part of the problem is the revolving door. It's not one person's fault. I mean, we have that revolving door with the term limits in Lansing that, you know, people are there for a certain amount of time, and it gets passed on, the problem gets passed on to the next generation of representatives coming in. So to blame one person would be unfair. It's not one person's fault, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Counsel. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? Anyone wants? Just real briefly regarding the medical marijuana forum that was held in Sterling Heights last month, I encourage anybody to go watch it, to actually see what was said. Personally, I'm not going to get too into it, but I don't think it's any surprise. I've been on the news saying, I think this is something worth exploring and for a number of reasons. This is not the time to do it. But what I will say is that Mr. Kazubski is anything but pushing this, and in fact, I would say he was, if he did anything, it was he made editorial comments giving the council reasons to oppose it. And I think if you asked him personally, he would say he's opposed to it. So, Mr. Smith, I don't know what you were watching, but I encourage, you know, go watch it and decide for yourself. I thought it was pretty informative, and I'll leave it at that. So, thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. We had a, probably had ten thousand percent more participation than our average budget meetings. There's usually one resident here, Mr. Norgrove, and Mr. Jefferson. Usually, there's two residents here, and so to see a big crowd tonight is kind of encouraging. So good, good to see that participation. I hope you'll come back for the next budget hearing as well. Two weeks, we do have a regular city council meeting a week from tonight. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.